Ladies and gentlemen, have your attention please, thank you. This is the regular meeting of the county commission. We are back from our recess. We're going to pick up on our 501 public hearing before a few little housekeeping comments. First of all, love your signs, please put them down. Okay. No, if you want to hold signs, here's what we're all about here, and I think you folks understand it. We are just delighted that you're all here, that you all came out tonight, less than beautiful weather tonight, to share whatever your opinions are, pro or con, or whatever about what we're going to deal with tonight. But this is about being courteous to those around you. So if you hold up signs, the people behind you can't see, and it's distracting. So if you go on the back wall and want to hold your sign up, that's okay, just don't be distracted. The other thing is talking in the room. This room, believe it or not, when people start mumbling and talking, we can hear it up here, and it's very distracting, particularly for your neighbors. So we're going to ask, if you have to carry on a conversation, please take it outside and be respectful of the people sitting around you and the people talking, okay? While I'm talking about being respectful, we don't allow booing, cheering, this is a no fun group, okay? We don't allow booing and cheering and whooping and hollering or whatever, okay? And just so you understand, tonight is a quasi judicial hearing. The board of county commissioners tonight are sitting up here as the judges. We are not supposed to have come to any predetermined decision, had any discussion about this issue tonight, so we want to hear what everybody has to say and give everybody the opportunity to say it, okay? So with that, now I'm going to take a little bit of time beginning, so I don't want to have to go over this again. So here's a couple of other things. I do not want to usurp your ability to speak in any way. So if every single one of you wants to get up tonight and talk, you're allowed up to three minutes to do that. But if you do, we all may be sleeping on the floor back here behind the podium. So just my thought, but you might want to think about this, if you get up and you say, "I agree with the previous speaker," or "I disagree with the previous speaker," or if you have some additional information that you think we should have, please bring it up. If you're in favor of it, tell us why. If you're opposed to it, tell us why. And you'll see why that's important in a minute, okay? When you come to the podium, please give us your name, where you live, and clerk has some green cards up here. If you're going to speak, it would behoove you to fill those cards out now, so when you come up, you can just hand her the card. We have overflow capacity set up in the jury assembly room across the hall. If some of you that don't have seats would like a place to sit down, there are seats available over there, and we have a TV and sound in there, so you can hear everything that's happening, just like what's on the monitor now, and when it's time to speak, you'll be able to come back in here and come to the podium. So nobody will miss anything if you want to go over there and sit down, okay? You're going to get three minutes if you're an individual, and you'll have five minutes if the clerk has a letter on file from your organization giving you permission to speak on behalf of that organization. So if you just want to say, "I agree," or you want to take your full three minutes, that's your prerogative, okay? But the bottom line is, the board respects the fact that you took the time to be here tonight. We want to hear what's on your mind regardless of what it is, but it must be related to the application, okay? If you want to talk about roads and trash service and stuff, we're not going to get into that tonight, okay? Okay, so with that said, let me run down through the proceedings for tonight and get everybody on the same page, and then we'll be ready to kick this off. So to ensure that everything runs smoothly tonight, it's important to quickly go over the procedure of how things are going to occur. First, the applicant will have the opportunity to present its application. After that, the county staff, and in between, commissioners may be asking questions of the applicant or whatever, staff. The applicant will have the opportunity to present, then the county staff will make its presentation, then the commission will open it up to the public, okay? Once the public portion is closed, okay, the applicant will have that opportunity to make a brief rebuttal. So what I'm going to do, just so you know, is I'm going to ask for those in favor first and those opposed last, and then that way the applicant, if they chose, can address any opposed and rebut those, but only those rebuttals. We're not going to open up new evidence or whatever. Okay, let's see. If any person decides to appeal any decision made by the commission with respect to any matter considered at this hearing, he or she will need a record of the proceedings, and for such purpose, he or she may need to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceedings is made, which record includes testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is based. I believe there is a court reporter here tonight, so yes, okay. So anyone who wishes to speak, come to the podium, please turn your green card, let us know, let Commissioner Davis know if you're representing an organization or on your own, so we know how much time to give you. There is a timer up here, it'll give you fair warning. It's much smoother if you watch your own time and stop rather than the buzzer hitting you, and this is, believe me, it's like a trap door opens. When the buzzer goes off, you're done, okay? Okay, so, comments from the public and parties must be limited to the subject and the issue before the commission today. When anyone comes up to speak, we expect everyone to conduct themselves in a manner fitting this professional setting. Personal attacks and other inappropriate behavior are discouraged, and if this occurs, you'll be asked to sit down. Let me just clarify, I've never had to do this, and I never want to, so everybody, we've had some highly contested issues, everybody has been very polite and very civil, okay? So we want to hear what you have to say, we want you to stay here, but if you become unruly, I'll ask you to settle down or be seated or be quiet one time. And if you don't do that, then we're going to have one of our wonderful law enforcement people come in and escort you out the door, okay? Because we're not going to let our meeting be disrupted by people that want to disrupt it, so just so we're all clear. Okay, and additionally, when you come up, it's time for you to comment. Your comments should be directed to the chairman. They shouldn't be directed to the audience or anybody else, okay? And you may have questions or concerns, the board will not answer those questions and concerns until everybody's done speaking, then we give the applicant, as I said, the opportunity to do a rebuttal. A little unusual tonight, this could be a long proceeding, and as such, the commission may at its own discretion take a recess as needed. If, whatever's ringing, please turn it up. This would be a good time for everybody to do that, okay? If you have some device that makes noise, please turn it off or put it on silent. If a recess is called, do not speak of this issue with any commission member, okay? So if we have to take a break, don't come up here and want to talk to any of us because we can't talk to you about. All right, and we, as the board of county commissioners, retain the right to ask questions of anyone at any time. So just as I said everything, remember, at the end, we want to make sure that all the board members up here have all the information they think they need. Then we're going to go down here, the attorney's going to do some stuff or whatever, so before we begin, I want to ask the applicant, is there any questions about the rules and procedure for tonight? No questions. Okay, county, we're good, everybody's good, county clerk's good, right? Everybody's good. Okay, so what we're going to do is, we're going to have it read by the attorney, then she's going to poll everybody on ex parte communications, and then we're going to move forward. Also, one of the things I want to do first to get this out of the way is that we've been given information that's been sent to us, that we've studied, that we've looked at the application, so I'm going to be asking for a motion to accept that into evidence. So is there a motion to do such?
Second.
Okay. So Commissioner Carnahan makes a motion to accept the evidence, seconded by Commissioner Schlebach. Is there any other discussion by the board? Hall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, and that passes unanimously. Okay, Madam Attorney, you want to start with the reading and then the questioning, and we'll go from there.
Yes, sir, and just for the benefit of the court reporter and the parties, that is the backup material that was just moved into the record. So before we get started with the ordinance, we'll go ahead and do our ex parte communications, and basically that is, have you had any communications related to this matter with anyone outside of this hearing today? It's related to PUD-22-03, and we'll start at the end with Commissioner Carnahan.
No.
Madam Attorney, I've had a tremendous amount of emails and I would say attempted communications on this matter, and as you can see.
Same, read tons of emails but have not talked to anybody specifically.
Same.
No.
Did I get the emails?
Yeah.
No ex parte.
Same as them, but no. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, Commissioners, at the conclusion of this hearing, you're going to be asked to consider an ordinance of Citrus County, Florida, political subdivision of the state of Florida, amending the Meadowcrest development of regional impact to allow conversion between commercial and office uses and attached residential units, providing for applicability, providing for modification that may arise from consideration at public hearing, providing for codification and scrivener's errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. Can I ask also, is there any formal party intervening in tonight's proceedings?
No, sir.
Okay, and does the applicant have any witnesses they wish sworn? No. Okay, good, so we've covered all the bases, I believe. So we got all the ground rules set. Commissioners, any questions before we get started? We're all clear on this, we've done this once or twice before. Okay, so we are ready to proceed, so I would ask the applicant to come forward, I believe.
That podium over there.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for having us. I understand the commission's had a long day, so we'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. My name is Sean Mosheim, and I'm a development manager at Green Mills, the applicant that's proposing the amendment that we're discussing tonight. I'd like to first express our gratitude for your previous support. Between our communities at Forest Ridge and Colony Park, we've developed 225 senior and workforce housing apartments in Citrus County. That's $33 million in private sector investment. These communities are quiet, highly attractive, and desirable apartment communities. Unfortunately, we've had to turn hundreds away because there's seldom a vacancy. We know there's a need for attainable housing in Citrus County, and this board discussed it on a number of occasions, including holding a recent workshop. The property we're discussing tonight is a great and unique location for additional housing for several reasons. For one, the infrastructure is already in place. Secondly, the land is dry, that is, it's not in a flood zone, and it's without wetlands. Third, the land's available at a fair price. These are attributes that are hard to come by in Citrus County. This property's been on the market for 30 years. The old one Dixie building next door's been vacant for several years, and likely because there aren't enough people living in the area. We started this process thinking it'd be a simple DRI amendment. Simple because all we're requesting to substitute is one already permitted land use for another already permitted land use, to convert the commercial use to multifamily residential to meet the market's needs. We're not increasing the permitted density or height or increasing any traffic impacts within the DRI. Currently, a 10-story commercial or office building of 129,000 square feet can be built. Land Development's staff report was supportive of our request to convert the commercial office use to 225 multifamily units. After hearing from Meadowcrest residents, we decided to reduce the request to 179 units, and tonight we're willing to reduce that even lower to make everyone more comfortable. As the staff report concludes, this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan because it merely requests conversion between two existing use categories within the DRI. That is, we're not introducing a new use to the DRI that does not already exist. We've met with residents of Meadowcrest. Some, not all, have expressed opposition. I personally believe their objection stems from unsubstantiated fears of renters, and I'd like to focus on those concerns and address them for a minute. They've raised concerns over high-density development. However, we're not asking to increase the density of this property. The property currently permits you to build a commercial or office tower as high as 10 stories. Multifamily would be restricted to three stories. Height is not the issue. The property currently allows you to build 129,000 square feet of commercial or office. A traffic engineer submitted analysis confirming that the conversion of commercial to residential at the density that we're proposing to build would result in zero added traffic impact. So traffic is not the issue. If you believe this about density, there are reasonable conditions that can be put in place to restrict density in terms of height, buffers, and number of units. It's been argued that multifamily housing's incompatible with Meadowcrest. Land Development's staff report does not see it that way. The reasons are simple. Multifamily is compatible with the existing commercial, office, and residential uses, and multifamily already exists in Meadowcrest at the same density, three stories and 12 units an acre. It's been argued that Meadowcrest is a deed-restricted community of private roads. You should know that the deed restrictions don't apply to this property, and the owner of this property's contributed to the maintenance of these roads for over 30 years. A new owner will be required to do the same. It's been argued that multifamily will bring crime and security concerns, however, there's no evidence to support these claims. Every study on the subject concludes that multifamily housing does not contribute to neighborhood crime. Crime rates near Forest Ridge and Colony Park, our other affordable communities in Citrus County, have not increased. Our residents are good, hard-working people. It's been suggested that multifamily will reduce Meadowcrest property values, though that didn't happen at the properties surrounding Forest Ridge or Colony Park. The notion that multifamily housing reduces property values is a myth that has been disproven by study after study. I hope Meadowcrest residents have carefully considered the alternatives to multifamily residential. Think about how much traffic and transient visitors a commercial shopping center or convenience store would bring. Ask yourself, would you rather live adjacent to a shopping center or multifamily housing? I believe many Meadowcrest residents will actually benefit from our proposal. I don't doubt that some current Meadowcrest residents will move into these apartments or know a friend or relative that would like to. If multifamily's developed, it will actually create less traffic, noise, and transient visitors to Meadowcrest than any of the other alternative uses currently permitted. Please consider all the benefits to the future residents and your business community whose employees need a place to live. There's an affordable and attainable housing shortage in this county. You have an opportunity to let the private sector provide more housing on property that already has infrastructure in place. This is what planners call smart growth. Three main points that I hope you take away from our presentation today. One, the proposed amendment doesn't increase the density or result in a negative impact to surrounding properties. Two, that we build beautiful, well-maintained residential communities. And lastly, our residents, and frankly, all renters, are still good, hard-working people who deserve a good quality of life, just like everyone else. Do we have a few slides that we care to share with you all? I'd like to call up Oscar Soul, Principal of Green Mills.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you, Sean, good job. So we've already, Sean already addressed a lot of-
Could you give us your name again?
I'm sorry, my name is Oscar Soul, Principal of Green Mills, Fort Lauderdale, Florida. We've already addressed most of the concerns that the residents have brought up. There was a concern about the impact of the Meadowcrest Park. This property is near the park, but what I'll tell you is that if you visit Forest Ridge or you visit Colony Park, we have a tremendous amount of amenities within our communities. We have resort-style swimming pools, we have dog parks, we have clubhouses, we have gyms, we have game rooms. I believe it's highly unlikely that many of our residents, if any of them, would jump a fence to basically go use private amenities from Meadowcrest. They're going to have their own amenities, so I think it's highly unlikely that that'll happen. Next slide, Joanna, please.
So as Sean alluded to, our proposal right now is for 179 apartments. We were thinking of doing that in two phases. It was not ever going to be built in one single phase. The reason for that is, the funding that we typically pursue at the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, your optimal number of units is limited to about 100. So we would not build 179 units at one time, but we were proposing approximately 179. We are, a single phase, we would propose 100 units. So one of the things I want you all to consider tonight, if you really do feel like density is a concern, a legitimate concern for this location, based on your will and pleasure, we would reduce the number of units proposed to 100, okay? So I just want you to keep that in the back of your mind when you hear all the comments. If that's really the issue, density, we will reduce the density to 100 units. Now, that's reducing the amount of housing that could be created on this property. You all need to balance the need for housing versus the concerns of the people that are here, that you're going to hear from later. But that is an option that you have to reduce the total number of units. As far as the demographics, our proposal really was flexible. We were thinking of doing two different phases, one targeted to seniors and one targeted to families, workforce housing essentially. Again, if these folks would be more comfortable with senior housing, we can consider that, your will and pleasure. I think the need for Citrus County is more in the workforce housing realm, and that's why we didn't want to necessarily commit to do senior housing. What I will tell you is, the Colony Park apartments that are here in Inverness, it's not age-restricted, it's workforce housing. However, just because of the demographic that you have here in Citrus County, about how half the residents of Colony Park are seniors, it's just, again, it's not restricted, but you have a lot of seniors in Citrus County today, and so half our residents at Colony Park are seniors, and that just happened naturally. Next slide, Joanna. I don't, this is just an aerial map of the property, Joanna's going to address that, I think, in her report. Next slide. This is a conceptual rendering of the community. I don't want to get into the weeds on exactly what the site plan will look like. This hearing is not about the site plan, it's really just amending the use. We're not seeking final site plan approval at this hearing. I think that our track record speaks for itself in a lot of ways. We build very attractive, beautiful communities. We're not going to build an ugly building here, okay? I mean, just go look at the work that we've done, we are not going to build an ugly building. But, you know, I just want you guys to understand, with this rendering, we're going to have a lot of amenities, it's going to be a very attractive building. Next slide, Joanna. As far as, this is a conceptual site plan, I think the biggest takeaway from this site plan is that when you consider, this is 179 apartments, by the way, on 15 acres, which is about the same density that we have at Colony and Forest Ridge. This property just happens to be bigger. Some people are saying, "Well, this is so much bigger than what you did at Forest Ridge and Colony." Well, the property is simply larger, it's a larger piece of property. But there's ample room to have gracious, open space, swimming pools, dog parks, green space. This is by no stretch of the imagination, in my opinion, fitting too much on a 15-acre piece of property. There's plenty of room even for 179 apartments, and as I've told you, we're willing to reduce that even further based on your guidance tonight. Next slide, please. This is an important slide because when we amended this same DRI actually a couple years ago on the property behind the Chronicle, that property was abutting, directly abutting single-family homes. And at the time, this commission had a concern about that, and you asked us to increase the buffer, and you asked us to reduce the height of the building that was closest to the single-family homes. Instead of three, you asked us for it to be two stories. The difference with this property is that there's a natural buffer of 280 feet between the edge of the property and the nearest single-family home. This property is not even directly adjacent to any single-family home. There's a natural buffer that already exists, and one of the things that you can consider tonight is even having additional buffers. Your code, your land development code requires 20 feet of buffer. We can increase that, double it. I don't, we wouldn't really have a problem with doubling it, particularly on the north end of the property where there may be more concern with the Meadowcrest Park and the single-family homes. There's a lot of different ways to address a buffering concern, but like I said, there's already an existing natural buffer that exists. That wasn't the case on the property that we amended, where we amended the DRI behind the Chronicle. Next slide, Joanna, please. This is just to explain our timeline. Some of you are familiar with how competitive the programs that we have to apply for at Tallahassee. It's once in a year, there's an open cycle, and it's a very, very competitive process. There's no guarantee that we'll even receive funding. The applications are going to be due at the end of the year, between October and December, and the funding decisions will likely be made near the early part of next year. And if we are fortunate enough to get approval, we'd likely be starting construction in early 2014, 2024, excuse me, and finishing in 2025, early. Next slide. Hopefully you all are familiar with the work that we've done, but we just, you know, we wanted to highlight the work that we've done at Colony Park and Forest Ridge, so just some images and just the fact that we have, we were just talking to our manager, Terry. She says she's got about 400 people on a waiting list at Colony Park right now, about 400 people on a waiting list, okay? We have turned away hundreds of people because we just don't have the vacancies. Next slide, please. These are, again, these are just, this is images of Forest Ridge, of our interior clubhouse, and this is Colony Park. If you haven't had a chance to go, look at these communities, please go. Even some of the folks that are here in opposition, I know that some of them have gone to these communities, and they have nothing but good things to say. I wish more of them would go. I honestly think if I can get almost everybody in this room over to Colony and to our clubhouse, I think a lot of them, I think, would be very impressed with what they see. Next slide, please. It was, comments been brought up several times that multifamily housing may reduce the property values of Meadowcrest. I'm very sensitive to that because I understand that these homes represent a major investment for these people that live there, okay? But the simple fact is that there's not a single study that I've ever read that suggests multifamily housing brings down property values in the surrounding area. And I sort of looked at the data on Zillow, I looked at, just randomly selected some houses near Citrus Hills and some houses near Colony Park, and I'm not saying that we are the reason that values have gone up. Obviously, there's a lot of market forces, but when you look at these charts and you look at these properties, and you look at the data we completed construction, there's no noticeable impact on the property values of the surrounding neighborhoods, none whatsoever. And I don't think there's any study in this world that has ever shown that multifamily housing reduces the property values of single-family homes. Next slide, Joanna. These are just a couple of examples. Again, I just randomly clicked different homes in the vicinity of Forest Ridge and Colony Park. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. So I wanted to, you know, with these hearings, especially it being at the 5 o'clock, it's very difficult for our residents to attend these hearings, and it's very difficult for people who support affordable housing and workforce housing and attainable housing. Oftentimes, they're working, or it's just hard for them to get here, right? So I wanted to, we had a recent grand opening at a property in Auburn Dale, and I wanted to show you a brief video of that event to kind of bring everybody, the audience and you guys, inside of sort of that event, so you can hear a little bit from some of our residents and see that property. If you could play the video, Joanna.
My name is Mitch Rosenstein, I'm a Principal of Green Mills Group. Today, we're at Auburn Village's grand opening here in the city of Auburn Dale within Polk County, Florida. We work closely with our local government partners. Communities like these can't happen without local government support. Here, it was Polk County who provided a local government contribution, and the city of Auburn Dale, our neighbors, and now are, well, more than our neighbors, we're being annexed into the city of Auburn Dale. We are grateful to the city of Auburn Dale and to Polk County for their support and their help making Auburn Village a reality. My business partner, Oscar Soul, and I started Green Mills Group now about 10 years ago, and we had a very simple goal, which was to be a best-in-class developer of best-in-class affordable and workforce housing communities throughout the state of Florida, and we've held true to that focus.
Hi, my name is Christina Braun. I'm Tina to my close friends, I'm family. I just moved into Auburn Village, and I couldn't be happier. My story is that I was in Louisiana during Katrina. I lost everything in Katrina, twice. Once to the storm, and a week later to looters who took everything from upstairs, down house. I have bounced from place to place, and since then, I moved to Florida nine years ago. Finding housing has been like winning the lottery, but I finally feel like I have won the lottery.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline. I am a resident of Auburn Village Apartments. Thank you so much, all of you, for all your hard work. Our community definitely needed it.
On behalf of my coworkers at Green Mills Group, we're grateful for the partnership. Thank you to our neighbors in Polk County and the city of Auburn Dale. Thank you to our construction partners, our design partners, and all of our team that made Auburn Village a reality. We're grateful for the effort, we couldn't do this without you, and we're proud of the My name is-
Okay, thank you, Joanna. So last thing that I want to make sure that you understand is that we're flexible, and we listen to community feedback. And there are a lot of different things we can do here together to address any legitimate concerns that are brought up today, starting with height restrictions. If you're really worried about height, if three stories is just too much for this area, even though there's already three stories permitted in this DRI, but if that's an issue, we can consider reducing the height on some portions of the site plan. If the total number of units is- If the total number of units is, is just too dense for this location, again, we're willing to go down all the way to a hundred units. We're going to lose, you're going to have, obviously lose an opportunity to create more affordable and workforce housing, but, you know, you're going to hear a lot, a lot of comments that this is too dense. So we're, we're, we're open to reducing it down to a hundred units. Buffers, we talked about buffers. There's already a lot of natural buffers that already exist here, but we can increase those. There's, you know, if you want to double the buffers required by the land development code, we would have no problem with that. And then the demographic, again, I know the need is for workforce housing. But sadly, in a lot of times when we run into these situations where, where we have scared neighbors, senior housing is just a little less scary than workforce housing. I mean, it's just the way it is, okay? Um, so I'd rather, I'd rather be able to bring more housing to Citrus County, whether it's senior or workforce. I'm indifferent. Either way, I know it's going to fill up, and I know the demand is there. I know you guys need workforce housing. So that's just something I want you guys to think about as you hear the comments today, and hopefully we can have a dialogue, um, after you hear from, from, from the folks that are here. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else in your presentation for?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions of the applicant at this time? Yes, Commissioner Davis?
Talk to me about long, hi, Mr. Sol. Um, talk to me about long-term management. You started ten years ago.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, obviously, one of the concerns, because yes, I read the roughly one billion emails received on the topic. Clearly, this is not a projects-type development. It is gorgeous, and I may end up living there one of these days when I want to downsize. What is, uh, the long-term management to make sure that it keeps those standards?
Yeah, well, one thing that I'll say is at Forest Ridge, we've now, it's been completed for seven years. And a lot of the comments that we get is it looks just like the day we finished it, basically. It's, it's.
So you still own it?
We still own it. We've, we have not sold any of the properties that we've developed, none. Um, our, our, we're, my partner and I are relatively young guys still. Um, and we don't really have a plan to sell any of our properties. Of course, you know, could that happen someday? Of course. But I'll tell you, with, with the program that we work with, there's, this program was created actually in nineteen eighty-six by the Reagan administration, believe it or not. A Republican administration created this program. The reason they created it is they wanted to get the government out of housing production. They wanted to get the private sector to start building, owning, and managing housing. They want it HUD out of the picture, basically. That's what they created the program for. So we have investors, private sector investors. We're a private company. We're not going to let the property go down like you might see maybe with, um, public housing or something like that. It's just, it's not going to happen.
Um, which brings me to my next question. How much will reducing to a hundred units impact the rent?
It won't impact the rent at all.
Okay.
Because our rent is basically established by the median income of Citrus County and, and the program, the funding program that we work with. So the rent will be the same, whether it's a hundred units, a hundred and seventy-nine units. What may end up happening if we reduce it to a hundred is we might only do a hundred and then leave a portion of the property for commercial or office development so that we can bring our, our land cost down. Because right now, we're, we're buying the entire property. So most likely, what we would try to do is have some ancillary, commercial or office use together with the hundred, a hundred apartments.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions at this time? Good, you touched on some, if you don't mind. Um, just for everybody's edification, the word that keeps coming out that I hear from people that have moved down here from up north is section eight housing. You want to touch on, for everybody's benefit, what you see, the difference in the.
There's a lot of misinformation about section eight housing. Up north, most, most of the time that when people say they're, they don't want section eight housing, what they're really referring to is project-based section eight housing where the entire property is made up of section eight tenants, okay? That's basically like HUD housing or public housing. That's not what we do. However, what I will say is if we have a renter, a potential resident that's interested in an apartment, and they happen to have a section eight voucher from your housing office, we are not going to turn them away simply because they have a section eight voucher. At Colonnade Park right now, we have, I think, four, out of a hundred and six apartments, we have four individuals that have a section eight voucher, okay? It's just, I think it's frankly illegal to turn somebody away just because they have a section eight voucher. It's basically a form of discrimination. That's not something that we're going to do. But we don't have any project-based section eight. This is not a, you know, every unit's not tied to a section eight voucher. It's just if a family comes or, or a senior comes and they happen to have a voucher, we're not going to turn them away.
And just to follow up again, again, I'm just kind of asking you the questions I've kind of heard people out in the community ask, and especially with these emails. Um, so these will be rental units and they're, you have a management team, um, on site. So what happens if people don't pay their rent?
If somebody get, doesn't pay their rent, they typically will basically move to eviction. And because we have a long waiting list, it's not hard to find another tenant. This is also another important point of why we typically have very stable tenants. They usually don't, you know, if you step out of line or, or if you don't follow the rules that our management company establishes and we establish, you're going to get evicted. And there's somebody happy to take your place. So a lot, it, it's, it, it does happen from time to time. I think at Colonnade Park, Terry said she has one eviction, I think, in the last six months or something like that, or maybe like the last year. I think, not a lot, but there have, it happens from time to time.
Okay, very good. Anything else from anybody? Yes, ma'am.
So what I'm hearing from you is by going through a credit background check, criminal check, right? Um, you, and you have a lot to choose from. You're kind of picking the cream of the crop.
That's right.
And, um, how many acres are in Imbernus?
Uh, seven or eight, seven or eight.
And, and Forest Ridge?
Ten.
Very familiar with Forest Ridge. My daughters went to Forest Ridge Elementary, so I've watched that. Um.
That's a hundred and nineteen apartments on ten acres.
And it was like that filled up?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I remember that. Um, okay, that, that's all I have for now. I have a lot more later.
Okay, thank you. Don't go very far? Yes.
Um, how many are in Colonnade?
Hundred and six.
Okay, ju- just to be clear, uh, so we understand, what you're saying is if you reduced it from the one seventy-nine to one hundred, that would be the dwelling units, but then you may go back to some other development, uh, that you could do there, commercial or otherwise, that you.
I think that the, the easiest way to, to, to put a condition on the approval would be to say that the conversion factor we're seeking would be capped at, let's say, something like a hundred, a hundred units total. But that doesn't mean, in other words, we're converting, the more apartments that we're building now, we're reducing the amount of commercial that's allowed. So we would just be able to convert up to a hundred. But that would then leave some commercial, not a hundred and twenty-nine thousand square feet. It would reduce the amount of commercial that we could build. And Joanna has the tables that, that, the ratio, basically. But that's what I'm saying is that if, if we kept it to a hundred, then I would like to still be able to build something on the rest of the property rather than just having it be vacant.
But just so we're clear, the application before us tonight is for the one seventy-nine?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, thank you. Don't go far. I'm sure there'll be other questions, so.
Thank you.
Is staff ready with their presentation?
Yes, sir. And this is a request to revise the Meadowcrest development of regional impact. There is a master plan for Meadowcrest, and that's what you're seeing on the screen. Before we move on, I did want to talk, point out a few things on this, um, particular screen. Now, what they are looking for is to convert commercial square footage and office park square footage to attached residential units. Now, as the applicant mentioned, attached residential isn't allowable, land used already in the Meadowcrest D R I. You can see it in the white there. Attached residential has a maximum of twelve dwelling units per acre. The orange area is there, our cluster units. Um, those are actually built out completely as far as their numbers. There is a conversion for industrial to cluster housing, and that is actually fourteen point five dwelling units per acre. Then you have the yellow, which is the single-family. That's about four and a half dwelling units per acre. Um, just wanted to point out, too, on this map, you've got several conversion tables that have been previously approved from industrial, not from commercial. And also, I wanted to point out the, um, three arrows that you can see in the red area. That's the commercial and the blue office park. There's three areas on Meeting Tree, three arrows. Those are actually, as part of the, the D R I review process, those are where the access points were designed by engineers and approved by engineering and the state. Um, at the P D C and following up a meeting with citizens, the applicant agreed that they would only have their main entrance, um, the shared entrance you can see on forty-four, that's between them and the Old Wind Dixie Plaza. Um, engineering doesn't really support that. Um, the three access points on Meeting Tree were designed by engineers. They were meant to do that, um, meant to handle traffic. Now, um, with traffic, as, as the applicant talked about, the conversion table using the I T E manuals does result in no net increase in trips based on the I T E. And this is the conversion table for this particular application that they're asking for. Again, these are I T E ma- um, numbers, commercial square footage versus how many residential dwelling units they could have per square feet. This is a zooming into that area of commercial and office park. Um, don't get too hung up on commercial versus office park. The D R I does allow interchanging, so they can all be commercial, all be office park, or a mix of those. This is looking, um, across Meeting Tree. These are, um, some existing offices. The site is on the left. And this is looking across the D R A that was pointed out. These are the nearest residents that the applicant pointed out. And this is a prototype submitted by the applicant. He had a, a much more detailed site plan showing on his PowerPoint, but this is what was provided to the P D C. So the P D C did review this application and recommended denial. Um, they had, uh, felt that it was not consistent with the particular area. Um, in your backup, there is a draft ordinance with the conditions that the P D C did consider.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions of the staff? Does the applicant have any questions of the staff? Nope, okay. Well, that's it. Then I guess we're ready to go to public, uh, input. We'll open up the, uh, public, uh, hearing. And we'll, at this time, I'll ask for those that are in support of this application to come forward, please. If you're in support of the application, please come forward.
My name is Linda Myers. I live in Brentwood. I'm speaking, uh, as an individual, informed and concerned citizen. And I'm here to support the project and/or negotiate with the developers. I personally spent the, uh, majority of my professional career in this business. Twenty-five plus years of building or trying to build affordable housing in places of all sizes and all incomes, for government and for nonprofits. And I say trying because there are so many obstacles to building needed housing. And I know one thing for sure. If you do not approve this or similar proposals, you and our county will be back begging for affordable housing. The newspaper documented, uh, just this week, the shortage of rentals and their rising costs. You know our population's growing. Jobs are iffy. Seniors are living longer, depleting savings. Majority of our kids need the free lunch program. Building costs, interest rates are rising. Available sites are diminishing. I, I don't know Green, Green Tree. I don't know these developers. But I know they have other successful housing here. Good management, as you questioned, and attractive design are the keys to long-range success. There, there are very few developers, large and experienced enough, to take on the risks of such a project, to tolerate the government regulation and restrictions, especially at a time of a shortage of building supplies and a shortage of labor. And I'm sorry to tell you this, but reducing the cost of housing does require local governmental intervention. It almost always requires altering local regulations, call for more units than may be previously permitted or allowed to build this housing we're not previously allowed. Tax exemptions, zero land costs are usual. Governmental subsidies are frequently needed, but are very, very rare. And facing an unwelcoming crowd is always part of the job. But later, they will be appreciative and ask for more. The waiting lists will be years long. The opposition unnecessarily.
I'm sorry, your time has expired. That's why I remind everybody, watch the timer in front of you, so you know, I hate to cut you off. Thank you so much. Could we have the next speaker, please, that is here to speak in support of this?
Good evening. Name's Terry Legree, thirty-seven, ninety-three West Crystal Downs Path, La Canto, Florida. It's, uh, this particular project, I think, is the right project at the right time for our county. I was involved with the developer back in the eighties. I wasn't here when the master plan was first initiated in the early eighties, but I was here when we started amending it and tried to get rid of industrial to go to more residential. Mr. Olson wanted to create a multi-use community, which he did. We have a place to play, a place to work, a place to shop. You can walk to Publix. This particular project is perfect for people that are retired and have to walk to a grocery store, to a pharmacy. And so it's in a good location. The developer has proven what he can do in this county already, so he has set the standard for you to look at, and I appreciate what he did. I was so happy when Summer Hill came because I see, I, I believe we have to go more vertical in our master planning and condense our, our densities into smaller areas. We've got enough of the one and five acre lots throughout our county, and we know what they look like. This brings, this will enhance this community architecturally. It will help it, uh, grow and become more attractive than what's there now. He addressed the traffic issues. Meadowcrest was planned for, Meadowcrest Boulevard was planned for that. The association did a great job of putting stop signs in, slowing traffic down. It's a very safe community to drive through and to walk in. But I think the real issue here is the people that are not here to speak, who really need this. Today, you approved a budget with the Sheriff's Department. Guys are trying to get up to a point where they can have a salary that they can afford something to live in. Young families are leaving Citrus County because the opportunities are not here to live. There's no rental product available. So I hope you will consider that. And this is a nice, nice step up for a young family to start, or someone that's going to be retired. I saw their project over in Beverly, uh, behind, uh, Publix, and it's a beautiful project. I walked through their units back a number of years ago. My wife and I went over. So I hope that you will, today, you consider, you are here for the, all the residents of Citrus County. And for those who are not speaking tonight, I hope you will consider their needs. We know what the, we know what the demand is. The real estate business is a fluid business. You constantly have to be changing and adjusting. Our market right now is demanding rentals and affordable housing, attainable housing. So with that, I hope you, uh, vote positively tonight for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have the next speaker here that's speaking in support?
Good afternoon again. I'm Tim from Imbernus. Uh, I think I'm here as a voice for some of those people that I just mentioned about, the people that couldn't be here. Um, I had plenty of people message me, ask me, hey, are you going to be able to make the meeting tonight? So, uh, I want to try to get the message across from a broad spectrum of people that couldn't make it. Um, just recently, I looked at the median housing cost of Citrus, and we're up thirty-three percent at two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Uh, one of the questions I asked earlier in the previous B O C C meeting was, um, how does someone on a forty to fifty thousand salary live here? That is our median salary. It's data. It's facts. Um, I'm talking about workers, electricians, plumbers. Uh, I'm talking about nurses, college students. Uh, let's talk about the graduating class of two, uh, twenty twenty-three. Where are they going to live? Um, are they going to keep staying at mom's house? Um, a, a lot of them are having issues. Uh, they're getting outbid on the market, right? So, uh, there's no rental properties if you look on Zillow or wherever else. Um, another interesting fact that someone made to me was, uh, Meadowcrest is one of the few areas walking distance to some commercial zones. Also, in a hub of public transportation that could take people to other nearby jobs, such as the four ninety-one medical quarter, without a terror, or without a terribly time-consuming commute. So when we think about this, uh, we think about the next generation that lives here. Um, I have plenty of family and friends and that have decided to leave because they can't find housing here. And then they go look for better jobs in another county that has housing and the payroll to back it up. So how do we convince the next generation of Citrus to take care of us? Um, don't get me wrong, I see the big flood of green shirts behind me, and man, that is terrifying to look at, all them. I love all of you. Um, but, please think about this. Um, we're here. I'm thirty-four years old. I, I purchased a house. I was fortunate enough to have that capital when I moved to this county. Um, but the people I work with and the people I represent, uh, they don't have it. They just don't. Um, like I said earlier today, uh, I spoke to a lady who's a teacher. She works three jobs. She has two kids. She's a single mother who went through a nasty divorce. a nasty divorce. She has nowhere to stay. I've offered her my couch before, but her dignity won't let her do that. We've got to think about them a little bit here as well. And like I said, I've seen some of the different complexes they built. Heck, when I first moved here, I tried to get into Colonnade, and I couldn't. There was wait lists too big. So I end up overpaying on rent on a house. That's all I got. Once again, I'm trying to speak for some of the people that couldn't be here tonight because they are working right now. So please keep that in mind. And no disrespect to any of you guys. I love all of you. I promise. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have the next speaker that's here to speak in support, please?
Good evening. I'm not a formal speaker. I don't do that anymore. So I just want to make a couple points. The need for affordable housing has been heard and heard and heard. It's constant. We need it in this county. It's needed across a lot of the country, but it's really desperate in this county. I am losing people that I count on for nursing, for veterinary, and everything else. We need homes for these people. Second one I wanted to bring up was the location of this proposal. It's right next to the public transportation. It's next to the shopping centers. It's close to medical. You have what these people need. The other thing I wanted to bring up, and this has been touched on a little bit. I'm from Washington, D.C. We had public housing, and it was a horror. We had huge crime rates. We had murders. We had an overworked police force. That isn't what this is. This is a home for people with security, with a place to enjoy, for their families. Please approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Give your name.
Yeah, could you give us your name, please? I'm sorry, we didn't catch your name.
Nancy Door.
Nancy Door. Yes, Speaker. Speaker in support, please.
Barbara Wheeler, representing Mid-Florida Homeless Coalition, so representing several of the people that they're talking about as well, as well as a member of your Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. So does Citrus County have a need for affordable housing? Based on the recent study by the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, Citrus County has a need for 603 units of individual housing, 310 units of family housing, for a total of 913 units. And that is a recent study and available to all to review. Where did that data come from? From HUD, from the D V Alliance, from the Department of Corrections, the Department of Education, and the V A. They all recognize the need for affordable housing in our community. Based on the people that come to the A H A meetings, we need affordable housing. We have senior citizens coming to our meetings and begging us for affordable housing. We continue to see the number of people who have never been homeless in their lives. That number continues to rise. That is something that our community is actually scored on when we go for HUD grant dollars to be able to house those people, and yet our number continues to rise. That is not favorable for us. So I ask, if not Meadowcrest, then where? I've been in the social service business for a long time, and like I said at the last B O C C meeting I attended, it was probably close to 20 years ago that I was at United Way of Citrus County when we did a study, and it was determined that there was a need for affordable housing. And now here we are, and things are not getting any better. Citrus is not a big urban area where we have people knocking down the door saying, "We want to build affordable housing here." I can tell you, it doesn't happen. We don't have the Catholic Charis, Charities, Dioceses of St. Pete or St. Vincent de Paul cares coming to our community saying, "Let us build affordable housing that we run." And yes, the county doesn't want to be in the bill, in the business of running affordable housing. Then let's support those people who do come. And I have been on the A H A for many years, and I have been there when Green Mills first came and did their first presentation. And we weren't sure about it, to be quite honest. We supported them, but we weren't sure. I think they have proven that they can do a good job, not only with, I mean, and they came originally wanting to do housing for our working folk, but basically people said, "No, we don't want that." So they did senior citizen housing. And like they said, it filled up rapidly. And there's a waiting list, and people are still begging. Then they did Colonnade. Colonnade is a beautiful place. And I can tell you, we, Mid-Florida Homeless Coalition, who has dollars to put people in housing, we have dollars, and we can't find housing that we can put people in. You can ask Dwayne Sipper, who's here, what a struggle it is when you have people showing up at the door like we did the other day, who have a one-month-old baby, and we have nowhere, nowhere to send them, because the path is full. All I can say is, take this into consideration. And I know, from being a homeowner myself, that there's always concerns. But I also know, from having run a business before, that a business can bring big trucks and a lot more traffic and a lot more noise, because we worked in it. We were operating a facility in Inverness where we had neighbors complaining because we had big trucks coming in all of the time. So pick your poison, so to speak. But I say, support our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we have the next speaker for speaking in support? Is there anyone else to speak in support? Third and final time. Anyone else to speak in support? Okay, is there anyone here to speak in opposition?
Good evening. My name is Attorney Ralph Brooks, and I have submitted a letter of authorization from Save Our Villages LLC, and I'd like a few additional minutes of time.
You're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Thank you. I'm board certified in city, county, local government, and I sit as city attorney for the City of Naples currently and the town of Yankee Town in next-door Levy County. And I've served for St. Pete Beach, the city attorney, Bradenton Beach, and Assistant County Attorney for Sarasota County, and Land Use Attorney for Monroe County. So I've worked all over the state, and I've dealt with these issues of land use and zoning, and also with affordable housing. Save Our Villages is not opposed to affordable housing. What we're talking about is this the appropriate location for a multifamily apartment rental building in Meadowcrest. What you're asked to do here is to take commercial land that was part of a master plan development, a planned unit development. That was an exceptional development, and which is why my membership at Save Our Villages invested their life savings in their retirement homes, in single-family homes in the beautiful Meadowcrest D R I plan development. There's a case, Bravard versus Snyder, and says that if you're going to make changes, those changes have to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. They have to be in compliance of the land development code. But you could still deny your request to change to a D R I if there's a legitimate public purpose for keeping the existing zoning, and that would be the existing master plan for the Meadowcrest community. And we think there is. I have transcripts from the Planning Commission meeting, because they weren't provided in your backup. We went ahead and had a court reporter transcribe the deliberations, and I'll pass them around. There's copies for everyone. If I could keep one for me. They voted 7-0 that this proposal was inconsistent with the comp plan, because it was not compatible with the existing single-family residential community within Meadowcrest. You'll hear from our membership and people who live in Meadowcrest, who bought there and invested their life savings today. And that can constitute competent substantial evidence, as long as it's fact-based observations. If they're talking about things that they have seen, witnesses, experience, perhaps not traffic levels of service, but traffic patterns, traffic safety, how they get in and out of their developments, their homes, what facilities they use within Meadowcrest. Competent substantial evidence is anything the Court, Supreme Court has held, Florida Supreme Court, that's sufficiently relevant and material that a reasonable mind would accept as adequate to support the decision. And the courts in Blumenthal, Sport Acres, Section 11, and Walburg have upheld denials based on citizen testimony where it's fact-based, including fact-based testimony about whether a development is compatible with their area. They're asking you to approve a black box today. There is no site plan, as they said. They want you to design their project for them. They want you to figure out buffers, figure out how many units is appropriate. We would tell you that no amount of multifamily rental apartment building units are appropriate in the Meadowcrest community in this location. If you look up why people do home ownership versus rental, you'll see it's not just to reduce the, your income taxes that you pay at the end of the year, but it's also to build equity and home ownership and enjoy appreciation in your home value. These people invested in their homes because they want to enjoy that equity, and they want to appreciate their homes, not only in terms of monetary, but appreciate them as home ownership. They have pride in home ownership. They maintain their homes. They improve their homes. And they work hard to make sure that their community is also well-maintained. There's greater privacy with home ownership than there is in a rental apartment. That's why many people move out of rental apartments and eventually get into home ownership for privacy, pride of ownership, appreciation, and building equity. If you're going to live in a home for more than three years, you really should buy the home rather than renting a home. And with this Meadowcrest community, you have people that have lived here for generations, and you'll hear from them today. They want to pass their home on to their children. It's not something that happens in rental apartments. Money for down payment assistance is available, and it's something that should be looked at for affordable housing. There's programs like F H A, SHIP, Habitat for Humanity, that put people in houses that they actually will own, and they'll maintain, and they'll be able to build equity with. If you look at the comments, you'll see what was provided. This has also been sent around.
Thank you. Your time's expired. Thank you.
If you could look at this, I'll pass it around.
Could we have the next speaker, please? In all fairness, if you hand us material right now, unlikely it's going to get read, because we can't listen, read, pay attention, and so. But you're welcome to leave anything you want with. Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name's Les Cook. I'm a Meadowcrest resident. This hearing is not about affordable housing. It's about an owner and developer seeking a radical change to an existing master plan. It's for profit motives, simply that. An apartment plan on 15 acres containing four massive three-story buildings. The rental building's up to 179 units, 35-to-40-foot-high walls, 100,000-plus-square foot, 300-to-400 people, plus pets, plus cars. There's no firm site plan, as you've heard, no use decision that's firm on what type of complex is being proposed. So if you give them a blank check today, the developer can go ahead, plan out what he wants to do with y'all. We will never get any more input than tonight. If he doesn't get funding, the change will be in place, and the owner can go ahead and seek out any kind of high-density plan he wants to do. This is not a case of not in our backyard. This project is proposed in our front yard, in the core of our quiet neighborhood. It's on privately maintained roads that we pay to maintain. It's just 100 feet away from our park and our clubhouse and amenities. It's not behind the Chronicle on industrial land. It's not over by the power line bordering 486. 32 units that were sold to the community as luxury condominiums that were going to be owner-occupied, and that's what they refer to as existing rentals because of foreclosure. The Meadowcrest Park and Pond is the centerpiece of this development. It's only 10 acres. It's unfenced. It's with hundreds of apartments nearby. Realistically, fence or no fence, people will find it. We will lose the largely private use of that park. If the massive project is allowed to go forward, it's going to become the dominant feature in that community. We will be the neighborhood behind the apartments. It will change the character and aesthetics of Meadowcrest, and it'll change it permanently. View matters. Aesthetics matter. That's why they call it curb appeal. We know why master plans were developed. They were meant to be followed. We want those commercial services delivered to us because we bought into that. Similar projects are at much smaller scales. The P D C got it right. There's no compelling reason to grant this change. If you address, if you can address the housing issue, do it somewhere on another piece of property. This isn't the only one. Don't do it on the backs of these residents in their quiet neighborhood that they can bicycle and walk in. Please vote to deny this radical departure from the Meadowcrest master plan. It's no way consistent with our one-story buildings.
Your time's expired. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could we have the next speaker, please?
Excuse me. Are you ready? My name is Stephen Shaner. I live in Meadowcrest. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm the stay-at-home dad of a little boy who turns three in August. My wife is a recent immigrant to this country, works long shifts, weekends, and holidays in a medical office, so we can pay our bills. They're in overflow now. I want to say something about where we live. When you go to Meadowcrest, you won't find a world-class golf course, a beautiful view of Kings Bay, or even gates on our streets. What you will find are trees, and lots of green, and homes, most of them built in the 80s and 90s and modest by today's standards. If you were to talk to the residents to describe Meadowcrest in a single word, I'm certain "quiet and peaceful" would be the ones most often heard. My neighbors have come before you today not to fight against something, but to fight for something. There is a difference. The developer's plan is just that, a plan, a notion, a figment, a rendering on a piece of paper. Meadowcrest, however, exists. It is real. It is, in fact, nothing less than the tangible manifestation of the American dream, an American dream we have worked our entire lives to achieve, and that many of us are still working to hold on to. We are here to preserve our community. On June 16th, I stood before the Planning and Development Commission and asked them to please hear our voices, to please hear our concerns, to please understand our love for our community. And they did hear us. They heard us and decided unanimously in our favor. This proposal is wrong for this location. It does not fit. This evening, I now stand before you. I stand with my neighbors, and again ask you, please hear our voices. I ask you, please, hear our concerns and our love for our community. In Citrus County, this beautiful nature coast, we are fortunate. We still have room for needed growth, but it must be smart growth that protects existing communities, communities such as Meadowcrest. Meadowcrest truly is our American dream. We place our trust in you to help us preserve that dream, and we thank you for hearing us. Thank you. God bless America.
Thank you. Could we have the next speaker, please?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Deborah Cleary. I've been a Meadowcrest resident for the better part of 17 years. I've had the distinct pleasure of specializing my real estate career in this one-of-a-kind community for 14 of those years. I've been blessed to work with and to get to know many people from diverse backgrounds who call Meadowcrest home. Let me share some of the faces of our residents from every walk of life with you. We are teachers, nurses, social workers, government workers, law enforcement, firefighters, a huge number of retired military servicemen and women, as well as many other professions. Our residents range in age from their late 20s to their late 90s. We are retirees and working families. You know, we've all been criticized at some point in our lives, but sometimes that criticism is so unwarranted that it must be addressed. Our local newspaper has attempted to paint Meadowcrest as a bunch of wealthy elitists, whose concern about this project are selfish and paranoid. That's an unfair and untrue classification, and an attempt at being divisive. Serving my neighbors has grown even more personal to me, though, over the last few months. I've witnessed an incredible awakening in our community through the Save Our Village efforts to oppose this proposed development, because it's not what we bought into. The facts are these. Many of our residents are on modest fixed incomes. Folks that can barely meet their bills have donated money to defend their community. Folks that haven't been out of their homes for the last two years, except for emergencies, and can barely walk, have made their way to our meetings. Their homes and their way of life are being threatened. This is what Meadowcrest is. It is a community. It's not brick and mortar. It is a byproduct of design, but it's also a decision. Pride in ownership, neighbors who look out for each other, a pleasant and- Pride in ownership, neighbors who look out for each other, a pleasant environment, a quality of life, an instinct to protect our investment in a place called home. It's our piece of the American dream. The proposal to build this massive rental complex is in stark contrast to the design and the plan of Meadowcrest. As a real estate professional, I truly believe it has the potential to destroy the spirit, aesthetics, and the market values within our community. The community of Meadowcrest has thrived for over 35 years. I implore you to allow it to serve the next generations for another 35 as it was designed. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have our next speaker, please?
Hi, I'm Trish Nicholas. You can hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I guess. I'm Trish Nicholas. I'm a homeowner in Meadowcrest, a happy homeowner in Meadowcrest, actually. In 1997, my husband and I moved to Citrus County to build our dream home. 20 years later, we retire, only to find that the maintenance of our dream home has become a full-time job. We began to look for a smaller home, and were quickly drawn to Meadowcrest. The grounds, the pool, and the play areas were pristine, and they were fit well within the natural habitat that it was built in. To no surprise, we found our home in Fairmont. Fairmont is just one of five villages in Meadowcrest. Each village has a board that oversees the property. The five-village boards are then overseen by the Meadowcrest Community Association. The association is committed to maintaining a quality environment overall, protecting the rights of users, and sustaining the integrity of the clubhouse and the pool complex. The association also ensures the villages complement each other and remain consistent and welcoming to owners and visitors. Deed restrictions are mandatory in all villages. Residents understand that, and they know the reason for restrictions, because they provide consistency and protection to property values. In the majority of the villages, changes must be approved before they're changed out. For instance, new roof and color, outdoor lighting, exterior paint, new windows, they all must be approved to ensure they'll be consistent for the neighborhood. Another difference in Meadowcrest is that homeowners not only buy a home, they also buy into a Meadowcrest quality of life. What's that? How so? As property owners, we pay a monthly fee to support the roads, sewer, maintenance of common areas such as the parks and trails, gardens, and other amenities. In essence, homeowners not only care for their home, but we care for the entire development. Meadowcrest was conceived and constructed as a single-family, owner-occupied community complemented by parcels of land to, or house, commercial offices, professional businesses, and small restaurants. The property being discussed is ideal for business due to its proximity on 44. We believe with the highway extensions coming into our county, the remaining parcels will be highly desirable to new businesses seeking to develop a presence in Citrus County. The master plan has worked so far, and business growth is all around us right now. Is this really the time to change the master plan for a project that does not fit within the rest of Meadowcrest properties? I encourage you to follow the Planning Board's recommendation and reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Good evening, chairman and commissioners. My name is Laquita Davis. I was born and raised in Florida. Many years ago, I visited Crystal River and was taken with its natural beauty and how it reminded me of old Florida. At the time, I thought it would be a great place to live. Eventually, I was able to move there, and in 2019, I purchased my home in Citrus County. I fell in love with Meadowcrest because it was beautiful, quiet, and peaceful. Living there with great amenities and friendly neighbors, I have found it provides a quality of life that I enjoy. My choice to buy in Meadowcrest was based not only on the physical features I could see, but also on the written words of the covenants and restrictions. Those are promises and ensure my investment is safe. Like many of my neighbors, I worked my entire life to be able to purchase my home. This is why my standing before you here today is very personal. As a retiree on a fixed income, my home continues to be my most valuable asset. I am here to defend that asset. I feel my investment and my way of life are at risk if this project goes forward. The developer's proposal is not even remotely in keeping with the master plan I bought into in Meadowcrest. The experts on the Planning and Development Commission voted unanimously to not approve this proposal. I ask that you make the same decision, and please do not approve the building of a massive apartment complex at the front door of my community. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Nancy Scro. In 1987, my parents left family and friends in Connecticut to move to a beautiful place they found, Meadowcrest. They were one of the original owners of the first village built, Arbor Court, and remained there until they passed. They had a wonderful life here for over 20 years, and I now own their home. My dad was instrumental in the construction of the Bocchi Court and Horseshoe Pit, which are still used today. My mom led water aerobics for over 17 years and initiated the heating of the lower pool. I am sure they are looking down and are so proud of these residents who have come together to ensure the community's quality of life remains at the level it was originally intended. I have observed the beauty and the positive changes of Meadowcrest over the past 35 years. The proposed huge apartment complex is a radical diversion from the original master plan we all bought into. There was only vegetation for many years around Arbor Court, where now there are lovely homes. The increased housing was welcomed because it was all part of the master plan. These massive apartments are not. The impact of these hundreds of rental apartments on our roads and infrastructure, which members of Meadowcrest paid for, would be detrimental to the landscape of our community. For all the residents here, and for those who have gone, who made Meadowcrest what it is today, please adopt the unanimous recommendation of your appointed Planning and Development Commission and vote no to this developer. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
My name is Doris Herp. I live in Meadowcrest. I think it's important that the commissioners know that there are more than one person in this room that's over 90 years of age. There's one lady here who is 99 years old and has a hard time getting around. She thought it was important enough to make the effort to show up because we're against this proposal, and we hope you vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mary Ellen Alaberty. My husband Frank and I have lived in Meadowcrest for almost 12 years. I served on the Board of Directors of Hillcrest Village for six years, and during that time was privileged to get to know the people living in Meadowcrest. We are a diverse, kind, and generous group. Many of us are volunteers in the community. Some of those people are here tonight. One is a dear friend who, while recovering from life-altering cancer surgery, continued to volunteer at Daystar and never once complained. This is the true face of volunteerism, and it is alive in Meadowcrest. This Sunday, our local newspaper tried to turn this hearing into some sort of class struggle. This is not what we are here for. What we are here for is to ask you to vote no to this proposed rental project. We should be able to expect the original master plan and deed restrictions we agreed to as a condition of home purchase in the community that we bought into be followed to ensure the continuity of our villages. The developers' previous projects in Beverly Hills and Inverness were constructed in areas consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods. They were not placed into deed-restricted communities. What we are standing against tonight is not the type of housing, but the location of this enormous rental project. It is not in keeping with what we bought into. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
My name is Richard Wick. I live in Hillcrest, in Meadowcrest, and we moved in because of all the reasons you've already heard. But I can't see how this has no impact on Meadowcrest and also the general community. I sent you an email on Friday that I hope you got a chance to see. I had three maps on there. One was Meeting Tree to 44 with Rock Crusher, no entrance into Circle K. Then the next one was the new map with the entrance to Circle K. The third one was a very busy intersection with a lot of opposing turns. I don't believe that 300 cars is no impact on that particular place on the road, on 44. I think what it increases, I think it increases the hazard to travelers on 44. There are people already trying to go straight across from the gas station over to Meeting Tree. We moved in because there was a master... Oh, one more thing. Was there a traffic flow study? I've heard there was not one. It was a general formula, so that's why I say I don't see how there can be no impact on traffic. We moved in because there was a master plan. We love the neighborhood, and I think in another letter I sent to you, I said it just doesn't fit. There are other places that are probably suitable for this type of thing, but it does not fit Meadowcrest. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Nicholas. I'm a Meadowcrest homeowner. In fact, I or a member of my family have owned homes on the same street for the past 30 consecutive years. The concerns that I would like to express here today center around traffic volume and the effects it will have on our privately-owned and maintained roads, as well as State Road 44. The roads that are my main concern are Meadowcrest Boulevard, which is home to the Chronicle, DMV, Elections Board, and other government offices, and Meeting Tree Boulevard, which provides access to many medical offices and other businesses. The addition of up to 179 apartments, which will be the first residential properties directly on 44, and the potential of hundreds of additional cars will add to the wear and tear of the aforementioned roads. The money to maintain these roads comes from the fees paid by the homeowners and businesses in Meadowcrest, and the amount is based on the projected longevity of these roads. With additional wear and tear, the road's lifetime will decrease and lead to an increase in our fees or even maybe in an assessment. It also affects the safety of our residents. We already have an issue on Meadowcrest Boulevard with stop signs being rolled through or ignored completely. So more traffic equals more incidents. With the commercial explosion slated to take place on County Road 486, Meadowcrest Boulevard, a tree-lined, one-lane-each-way street, will become more of a convenient cut-through from State Road 44 to 486 than it already is, which will also lead to more rapid deterioration of 44, a road that will be further impacted by the nearly 1,000 homes that are scheduled to be built up on Rock Crusher. A few years back, a traffic signal was placed at 44 and Meadowcrest Boulevard in response to the increased traffic and safety issues. They had thought traffic was heavy then, it has and will only get worse. Another concern is access from the new complex onto 44. The proposed entrance will be in between Meeting Tree and Meadowcrest Boulevards, an already busy section of roadway with no official traffic study being done. The new Circle K is directly across from Meeting Tree and just west of the traffic signal at Rock Crusher. This is already a nightmare to navigate, will only get worse with the addition of an apartment entrance. That section of 44 from Rock Crusher to Meadowcrest Boulevard is about 1,600 feet, and is only a little over 1,000 feet from Meeting Tree to Meadowcrest Boulevard, an awfully short distance to be adding an entrance to an apartment complex. I'm sorry, but our quiet, homeowner-occupied, deed-restricted development, as well as the surrounding area, just cannot handle this amount of traffic on our roads. In closing, I invite all of you to drive our roads, see our beautiful development, use your vision and common sense to realize this is not a good fit for the first residential property on 44. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Ron Nykeel. I live in Fairmont Village in Meadowcrest, and my doctorate is in behavioral studies with a focus on quantitative and qualitative research methodologies. Most of my 50-plus years in career were focused on high-density developments, such as lodging facilities, casinos, resorts, apartments, condos, student housing. Ironically, it was from a developer's perspective. So my perspective here is perhaps quite different than what you've heard. In the hundreds of studies, which are called feasibility studies, you look at things included such as the financial, environmental, economic impact, market demand, crime, and traffic flow assessments. In these hundreds of studies, with very few exceptions, crime, traffic, all increased, and with the addition of negative environmental impacts. I'm saying this as a developer, so as a resident, I feel I have a different perspective. Exceptions were rare, such as a resort that was put in the middle of a desert with a golf course. That's how rare they were. Meadowcrest is an extraordinary, classic, mid-century planned community. It belongs in a storybook, with its large oak trees, beautifully landscaped homes, spaciously set apart. I think it is so ironic that yesterday evening, the federal government announced it's going to plant 1 billion trees in the next 12 months to help with climate change. Yet here on the nature coast, this project would cut down hundreds of trees. There are no sidewalks. Streets are tastefully designed for walking and socializing with your neighbors, and the park is safe zone to relax, to walk your dog, be with your grandchildren. Our residents are in their 70s, 80s, and 90s, and grandchildren are present. It is difficult to conceive that why one would ruin all of this with a high-density apartment complex, especially when there are numerous other sites throughout the county that could potentially benefit from such a development. I can probably link 10 of them right off the hand in Crystal River. So what I'm basically saying is that I moved here, by the way, from Destin, where we lived in an apartment complex for three years while we studied Florida because we wanted to retire here. I can only tell you that we had a very nice apartment complex. It was located behind a supermarket complex, and we had the sheriff there three days a week.
Your time is expired, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can we have the next speaker, please? Once again, I'll encourage you to watch the timer so you don't get cut off in mid-sentence. Yes, you got one right there. You can trust, you can trust, we have a sworn professional timekeeper, so you can be...
I was like, I've got my little iPhone on the timer, but give me a second. Like, if I just said that, does that start the clock? No, no, not yet.
Sworn? Are you swearing to me again?
No, no, no. You swear all the time.
That's all right. Can you hear me okay? Because I'm kind of built short to the ground. All right.
Your time is starting when you start talking.
All right. My name's Liz Habba. I live at 6058 West Dunare Loop. Most of our community are seniors. We bought into a quality of life because we came in with agreeing to a deed-restricted rules that we would live by, but we knew that it was protected by a master plan, which is really the reason we're here today, because you're being asked to grant a variance or a change to that master plan. Commissioner Kitchen, I heard you say you like real numbers. I'm a math head, too. I like real numbers, and so I want to talk about some numbers, and I'm going to try and cut through it as fast as I can. Seven to zero, that's a really powerful number because that is the number of your appointed -- experts on the Planning and Development Commission that voted against this proposal. And that's being glossed over. Seven to zero, unanimous across the board, said don't do it. Let's try density, okay? Go back and forth on density. Simple math. 666 residential structures on 213 acres, you get three units per acre. What he's proposing at 179 on 15 gets you 12. That's four times our current density. If you go down to 100, as long as you reserve, that right, he can come back for another bite at the apple for the other 79, which by the way is the legal maximum on those acreage, then you're at seven. Simple math. That's twice our density. It doesn't fit. It's inconsistent. No traffic flow study was done. All they did was some general mathematic equations, and even in the planning, if you look at the transcripts from the Planning Commission discussion, they pointed out, these numbers aren't quite right, but it's just the math that we're doing. Check the transcripts. Let's look at some of the things I found really funny when he was putting up the homeowner prices. Take a look at page 985 in your package from today, guys. You're going to see a house that has a stated value of 428K, but that house actually sold for 317. That's 111,000 less than what he's claiming. Now, what's interesting is, it actually, the difference between when Forest Ridge was completed and five years later when that house was sold, there was no appreciated value. Now, I know there's realtors in this room that can tell you in Florida, houses went up in that five-year period. The Zillow rates that he's quoting, everybody knows are soft and can't be trusted. He's disingenuous. He went down from 220 to 179 with a big applause, like, look at me, I went down to 179. Okay, great, but that was legal maximum. Oh, yeah, what about that? Affordable housing programs that are being kicked around here, guys, you should be aware that the specter of police and nurses and teachers that can use those, if you make more than $15 an hour, some of those programs just don't even apply. So that would not apply to the people that they're holding up for you. The infrastructure, he has, God, I love this site because of the infrastructure. Of course he does, because we paid for it, we maintain it. He's building on our backs, on our dollars. So if you wonder why people are so impassioned, we're here. We are hoping that you are smart, as your appointed planning commission will say no.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen.
Sorry, it's like when you rope a little cat and you go back.
Time's expired, and please, no applause. We've already asked about that. Next speaker, please.
Wow. All I can say is wow. Hello, my name is Barbara Carson. I'm a retired RN that has lived in Citrus County for over 30 years, and now live in a modest villa in Fox Hollow of Meadowcrest as my dream retirement home. Meadowcrest has a very positive and well-established reputation as a safe, quiet area where residents value the natural setting. It is somewhat of a gateway to the charm of Crystal River. The tranquil park-like appearance, our pond, picturesque oak trees, walkways, and wildlife, you might call it aesthetics, are all a part of what Meadowcrest so beautiful, it makes Meadowcrest so beautiful and appealing. We can all see the extension of the Suncoast Parkway has already impacted the traffic volume on 44, heading toward Crystal River just outside our community. Internally, the streets presently serving the Meadowcrest community are very busy, as well particularly as Meadowcrest has become a cut-through road for the general public traveling from Norville Bryant Highway to Highway 44. The traffic volume on Meadowcrest Boulevard has already presented safety issues for walkers, bicyclists, and yes, our wildlife. Motors are not deterred by stop signs as they frequently speed over the limit. The influx of people that would be generated by additional building would destroy the community's remaining tranquility, endanger pedestrians, and further tax the infrastructure, as well as small businesses in the immediate area. Crystal River is big enough for everyone, and it has many areas that would benefit everyone. Our Meadowcrest community has been established for a long time and has remained a beautiful natural preserve with modest homeownership that would be a model for other areas. The addition of a high-rise rental apartment complex would decimate the tranquility and the atmosphere that our community has retained for many years. Many other counties have already given up their natural areas for progress. Let's not make the same mistake here. The Nature Coast is a treasure in Florida. Meadowcrest is a treasure in the Nature Coast. Please help us preserve that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Bridgette Brothers, and I've been a homeowner in Meadowcrest for over 20 years. I'm a recently-retired teacher from Citrus County Schools, lastly, Crystal River High School, and I'd much, feel much more at home pleading my case to 109th graders tonight, but I'm passionate about Meadowcrest, and I'm just here tonight to tell you that we hope it will remain what it's been for a long time. Buying into Meadowcrest was a big investment for me, but I remember the first time I drove into the subdivision, I was like that old Tom Cruise movie, You Had Me at Hello. So you or your family here have probably, over the years, taken prom pictures, graduation pictures, engagement pictures at the park in Meadowcrest, and, you know, we're a very welcoming neighborhood. We have no gates, and we have no fences, and as a result, our residents won't be the only ones who will miss the serenity if this huge apartment complex is proposed, is approved. Our homes are our major assets. I know that's redundant, you've heard it a lot tonight, but we do fear the values of our homes, the degradation of our peace, and our quality of life will suffer if this is passed. Meadowcrest is already fully developed in terms of housing. Our private streets are already busier than I have ever seen them over 20 years, people cutting across 44 to 486. I don't know where we're going to absorb hundreds more people in accompanying cars on our private streets. Lastly, I just want to say, I deliver meals on wheels all over West Citrus County. I know there's still a lot of property out there that could accommodate this complex and even more units than are what proposed, without having a negative impact on an existing community. We embrace Meadowcrest and all of our amenities. For me, over 20 years, it's been like a little piece of country in the city. So please vote no to this development, so we can sustain the quality of life that we purchased into and one that we've all grown to love. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please? Just so I can get an idea, how many other folks are wishing to speak before we wrap this up? Okay, I'm just trying to get an idea. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Sherry Burgess, and I'm a small business owner that has lived in Meadowcrest for only three years. I bought in Meadowcrest because my cousin was there, and when I drove in, I saw the beautiful landscaping, the tranquility. I mean, I lived in Sarasota. It was crazy there. So I bought into Meadowcrest. I am before you now because I'm expressing many concerns, and this is not only myself and Meadowcrest people, but all the other deed-restricted communities around. I have the pleasure of meeting hundreds of people every single month in my job. This gives me the opportunity to discuss current events with people, problems that are arising in the community. The response has been overwhelming, not only from a number of the deed-restricted communities, but also of the social clubs and organizations that I have talked to. People are worried. They're very worried. They know that we need housing, but they're worried that it's going to impact their developments. So in fact, some of these people are, wherever the overflow room is, I don't know, in the overflow room, all of us are extremely concerned. Your own approved professionals on planning and zoning, as you've heard over and over, vote seven to zero. We ask you tonight to please vote no, so the people of Meadowcrest can keep their tranquility. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please? And that does remind me, if there are folks in the overflow room that wish to speak, make sure that you come in before we finish public input, okay?
Hello, my name is Lynn David Clem. I live at 1680 North Wimley Drive. I've been there about five years. My wife and I, we visited Florida quite often. We went through hundreds of subdivisions, and there are no other subdivisions that's like this one. It's the most beautiful one that we've ever had. My wife saw the house, we bought the house, and we've been there ever since. Sometimes I think about Mr. Olson, the fellow that designed the place and his team. He did Meadowcrest, he did Black Diamond. He said, they were thinking way ahead of their time. They've laid out something that's lasted an eternity almost, and I think sometimes when I look at it, Meadowcrest is not a black diamond, but it is a diamond. And when you go chipping at a diamond, you know what happens. Sometimes it loses its luster and its shine, and I'm really proud of that subdivision, and I'm proud of everything that goes on in it. And I hate to see something come in there that's going to shine a dark light on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Joel Shimay, and I'm a resident of Meadowcrest, a relatively new resident of about a year and a half. I was familiar with the Crystal River area because we RV'd this area and we enjoyed it. Subsequently, found Meadowcrest, and the situation is such that due to health conditions and stuff, I could not live up north anymore with the snow and cold country, and I came down here. Meadowcrest is a diamond in the rough. Now, my neighbors have spoken so many things here, and basically, they said everything I was going to say. But what I like to point out is conflicts and liabilities. First conflict, Meadowcrest Apartments. Why Meadowcrest Apartments? Why not Gulf to Lake Apartments? I could see this being a conflict as time goes on. Other conflicts, the heart of Meadowcrest is the park, the lake, the walking trail, the games, the amenities, the pickleball, the basketball, the playground. All these here become exposure to the community. Besides the clubhouse and the two pools that are fenced in, the rest is wide open. Well, as I say, the community is, the traffic pattern is low now, but God for sake, a child drowns in that lake, what type of liability do we have there? Especially this is, that pond is an attractive, attraction to young kids. Let's say a young child gets his teeth knocked out on the swings in the playground. Liability, exposure. I mean, these things all come along with dense population, so I just want to bring your attention to those facts. I know the commissioners, you've got a lot of work ahead. This area is growing so fast, and I've just seen it the last few years myself, and it's like everybody has mentioned, smart growth. What is smart growth? Well, we got Meadowcrest, not densely populated.
Thanks, sir. Time's expired. Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jamie Hobb. I live at 6058 West Dunare Loop, and you probably heard from my lovely and animated wife. I didn't, so therefore, I didn't plan to come speak tonight. This may come a bit disjointed, but there are some things that were said tonight that just seemed a little incomplete, to be fair. One of the apartment units that was on the presentation was this video of Auburn Village in Polk County. I just did a little quick research on that. There are 102 units in that apartment. 60 are one-bedroom, 42 are two-bedroom. So if you add all that up, it's about 144 people per bedroom. It turns out, I did a little research on this low-income tax housing credit. It's a great boon for developers, and it is a federal program. They're bathing in the glory of being created under President Ronald Reagan, a popular president, but it's been around a while, so we know a little bit about it. I found a study in 2009 that said buildings created with a low-income tax housing credit are 20% more expensive to build than regular apartments of the same nature built with, for market rate rental. So I don't know what that necessarily does for it. Perhaps it's because, as Oscar Sol just said today, they're picking the cream of the crop through credit checks. So in my research on Auburn Village, it turns out with these 102 units, they were only getting 10% of them in the lowest income rate. The way the low-income tax housing credit, I'll explain it really quickly, it's been around, they only actually have to give out 20% of their units at low income. So if people think this is all low-income housing, it's not. That's probably why they're building all these luxury facilities. They have to sell somewhat above-market rent to make up the difference and get a good profit. Now, I asked this question at the library, and I was told, you know, there was this other option, and so I looked at that. Yeah, you can, as an alternative to having 50, 20% of the units at 50% or less of the county median income, you could also, as an alternative, have 40% at 40% of the median income, and I think some amount at the 60% median income. Well, in Auburn Village, according to this press release, they only rented 10% of that lower amount. So that's about 10 people in this of 144 that were below 50% of the median income. So we definitely need affordable housing. There are a lot of ways to do it. This may not be the boon you think it is.
Thank you very much. The next speaker, please.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Claire Newcomb. I've lived in Florida for 50 years. My mother moved here in 1970, and we lived in Sarasota, in Siesto Key, and slowly moved north because of progress. The last place was Crystal River. My mother is gone. She's been gone for many years now. I came to Crystal River because my sister, Rose Harris, lives out at the mini-farms. She told me to move to Meadowcrest, which I said, wonderful, it looks great, it's exactly, I am a single working woman, okay? I am not retired. But I will say, the only reason these gentlemen want to build on Meadowcrest property is because the infrastructure is already there for them, the water, sewer, electric. So they save hundreds of thousands of dollars by building on that property. If they have such a grand idea, why put it in such a small space? Put it out somewhere where people can really enjoy it and stuff like that, instead of in Meadowcrest, which is deed-restricted. Our infrastructure is under pressure all the time. As you all know, you hear about our breakage and everything like that. Putting this kind of structure onto our village will be massive to us, to us as a village. I ask you, as a working person, I've worked in the building department with records and everything like that for Citrus County, and I look forward to living my life out here. I thank you all for listening. Please do not let this happen to Meadowcrest.
Thank you. I love seeing all my Sarasota people move up here. I'm a native. Next, please. Sir? Ma'am?
I wasn't planning to speak, so unfortunately, I didn't fill out a green card. Can you all hear me?
You can fill one out when you're done speaking.
Okay. My name's Carol Lefler. I live on Indicott. That's the street that's actually going to be the closest, probably, to this area that we're talking about. The recreation area is right adjacent to our houses across from our street, where we have the lake and where we have the lake and everything. I'm going to talk about something totally different. I agree that we need this type of housing. My background is social services. I've worked to raise money for hospitals. I've worked for the homeless. I've worked most of my life for the underprivileged. And frankly, I have felt that it was very unfair to be judged by the news media and all the paper articles that I've read. No one has ever come and tried to interview any of us. I really do believe there are several sites within this city, and I believe the city needs it, and I have even told people that I would offer to help since my background is marketing and PR, and Ron Nichols has done this. So we're not trying to push it off on anyone. But what I want to look at is the mental health and the stability of the elderly in our community, and somebody's got to stand up for them. I have three people on my street that are in their late nineties, and they walk down our street without sidewalks. And they have already voiced to me that they're scared to death to walk anymore because the traffic is increasing so much just because the houses are filling up again. We actually sell houses on our street before they get on the market. So I ask, they've given their life to this country, most of them. They've invested themselves in our social services. They've done volunteering. Why would we disrupt their lives to this level and disrupt their mental well-being in the twilight hours of their life? I don't understand how it's gotten this far. And I've written a letter to the newspaper. I don't think it got published. I never saw it. So I really believe that we need to be standing up for the elderly just as much as we stand up for the poor. They don't have any money in their bank accounts. They've got enough to have their hair done for their funeral. They've paid for their funerals. They don't want to be a burden to society. So I really, I'm just asking you, I'm begging you. Look at the flip side of the coin. And I'm one of those. I'm seventy-five years old. I bought this house a year and a half ago, and look what I'm in. I came here to be peaceful, quiet, love my neighbors. Talk about a neighborhood you'd love to live in. If this is an Andy Griffith town, I don't, I've never seen one. So we-
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening to me.
And see how when everybody laughs, they take up your time, see? So that's why we ask not to do that. All right, the next speaker, please.
She looks amazing for seventy-five.
Well, I'm not going to make any personal comments about you. Next speaker.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm William Mauer, PhD. That's not a medical doctor, that's a physical. PhD, and I got Parkinson's, so I hope I'm not being disruptive here.
You take your time, sir.
But I realize that I want to support my fellow neighbors. And I moved into Meadowcrest about eight years ago. Came from Sugar Mill downsizing. I think Commissioner Kitchen was involved in that, where they tried the same kind of thing over in ninety-eight and nineteen. Behind that shopping center, they wanted to put a low-cost housing development there. I have, basically, I'm going to narrow it down to two things. One is my environmental knowledge, knowing that the greenery that they want to cut down is going to not block the noise coming from forty-four. We know that Route forty-four is going to be more densely traveled. Now, we got the end of the Parkway, and very concerned about where the minute, minute, the road that comes out on the forty-four. Meeting Tree Boulevard, yes, I'm sorry. There's no traffic like there that is unique to that particular intersection. There's one offset a little bit at Rock Crusher. And there's a blind curve coming around there. And the traffic, the speed limit there is fifty miles an hour. And that means that, I did a little calculations, about seven seconds the person has there at Minuteman. You know, before a car can get around that curve and hit them if they got the green light. So I'm concerned about the safety of my neighbors. And older people are a little slower on the reaction time than driving cars, as we all know. And cutting the trees down, that's going to take away the blocking of the noise that's going to be created by that housing development, and they're replacing them with pavement, asphalt, concrete. They're going to have to have driveways. They're going to have to have parking lots. They're going to have to have services providing them, so that's going to increase the traffic. And I just want to, with this, now I'm sure we've got to look at the four or the five W's. Who, why, what, when, and where. And I can add another one to that, and after you know, seeing these, there's a wow factor. Say, wow. So I want to just voice my opinion here in support of the people of-
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you being here. Can we have the next speaker, please?
To the previous speaker, I say, God bless you, sir. Good evening. I appreciate your time and attention. You've had a very long day.
Could you give us your name, sir?
My name is Kevin Kelly. I'm a happily retired police chief. My wife Marion is a happily retired high school school secretary. We both own a home in the Hillcrest Village of Meadowcrest. We purchased our home knowing it was a planned urban development with a master plan and appropriate zoning to accommodate both residential, commercial, and professional suites. We also had the additional benefit of covenants, conditions, restrictions, and bylaws. The question in our mind is simple. Why have a master plan and designated zoning if it can't stand the test of time or challenge? Would Meadowcrest even look the same if this petition was granted? I think it's fair to say we live in a world where there's very little agreement about much of anything. It seems a vast abyss has opened up. Half of us are on one side, and half are on the other. However, at the June sixteenth meeting of the planning board, the members were careful in their deliberations. They heard essentially the same presentation that the developer presented to you this evening. They did discuss this carefully, and very, and I quote from the minutes that were posted on the Citrus County website. "The Planning and Development Commission finds the application PUD two-two-zero-three inconsistent with the Citrus County Comprehensive Plan. Granting this request will adversely affect the public interest and recommends denial of the application." While the members of the planning board were vocal in their support for affordable housing, they were unanimous in their decision, and they clearly agreed with the discussion. "We are not about affordable housing, but changing the master plan, and it was simply the wrong fit for Meadowcrest." They determined a three-story building would not be compatible with surrounding uses, and member Kurt Stone indicated it would have too big an impact on the folks who live in the quiet, deed-restricted community. Board member Carol Scragg indicated, yes, we need affordable housing, but not on the backs of these people. Similarly, James Roy's indicated, and he spoke in support of the village residents, "These people made a big investment, and their community should be preserved and protected." We are here today to implore you, the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners, to uphold the unanimous decision of the planning board and deny the petitioner's request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can we have the next speaker, please?
Good evening, Commissioner. I think the biggest news I have is that I'm the last one.
So far.
So far. This is a petition of over seven hundred signatures of people within and outside of Meadowcrest that I've signed to ask you to deny. Good evening, members of the board, commissioners, chairperson. Let me quote-
Can we have, can we have your name?
My name is Sylvain Rubitaille. I have owned a home in Meadowcrest for sixteen years. And I have the transcript of your appointed PDC hearing on June the sixteenth, and I read from Commissioner Stone, verbatim. You know, the whole idea of discussing affordable housing, I think, is a red herring in this whole discussion. You know, we're not here to discuss public housing. We're just here to discuss the conversion of various elements of this PUD from one classification to the other. It's so important. I want to read that again, but I won't. Think about it. That's what it's about. Not affordable housing. We never were against that. This is it. This is a red herring, okay? This is about rezoning one piece of land in Citrus County. And your appointed experts heard it all, even though, as mentioned by the applicant earlier today, the staff report was positive. The staff report says there was no impact on traffic. Well, that was not, all that was reported to your experts on the sixteenth. And they all came back with seven zero against. Not five to two, not six to one, seven nothing. And talking about that, let me give you a couple of quotes. This is a transcript that we got from marvelous misquote reporter here. So those are exact transcription. We have Commissioner Scragg. "I find this project not compatible, and I would have a very difficult time agreeing to it." Commissioner Stone. "Obviously, it's going to adversely affect the public interest of the public. It's not compatible with adjacent properties as the PUD is constructed. The homeowners shouldn't have to continually re-justify the condition of the PUD to outside interests." These are all quotes from your experts. Further on, Commissioner Roy said, "I can't agree with this proposal because I think it's just too much of an impact on the perimeter of this community, and it will impact on traffic going through from four eighty-six to forty-four." Commissioner Bramblett. Commissioner Bramblett stated that, "I'm voting against this because I believe in my head, the way that I see it as a real estate agent, as a real estate broker."
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to address the board at this time in opposition to this resolution? Anyone else to speak in opposition to this resolution, third and final time? Okay, I'm closing to public input. At this point, we give the applicant a chance for rebuttal to the points that were raised only. So this isn't an opportunity to re-present your case, but just to speak to whatever you wish to speak to in regards to the concerns that have been raised. And again, folks, if you keep the, keep it quiet in the audience, please.
Thanks again. So a couple of technical things that I want to mention that were brought up. Number one, it was suggested, why didn't we do a traffic flow study? The simple reason was mentioned by your planning director, which is that the traffic and the roads were already studied on this property, and they were planned specifically for a certain number of trips. And so when we submitted our engineer's letter making the conversion factor, we specifically did that to not increase any traffic. So there was really nothing to study because we're not increasing the traffic. The roads have already been planned and planned for this level of traffic. So that's why there's no need for a traffic flow study. It's already been, it's already been studied many, many years ago. It was suggested that, I'm asking you to design this community. I'm not asking you to design this community. I'm simply suggesting that there's some very reasonable conditions that can be placed to address some of the concerns. But again, I'm not, I'm not asking you to design this community. In fact, it's very important that you understand, we're not here to design a final site plan. We are not requesting any variance from your land development code, none. We're going to comply with the land development code. And if we wanted to deviate from the land development code, we would have to come back to you specifically to this board to ask for a variance. But we're not asking for that. We're just asking to change one use up to another. There's a lot that has been said about, why can't we just find another site? Why can't we just go somewhere else? I want to address that point. There's a couple of things there. First, the funding that we pursue is, there's a lot of criteria based on the location. You can't be out in the middle of nowhere in a rural area with no access to transportation, to groceries, to schools, to shopping. I mean, you, part of the scoring criteria is you have to be in a well-located location that has neighborhood amenities that the residents will use. You can't just always put your affordable housing in the middle of nowhere. That's part of the criteria. We won't be able to compete unless we're in a reasonably well-located area. It was discussed that the DRI, it was brought up a lot, that people bought into Meadowcrest because of the DRI. The irony is that, and I'm told, and I'm actually the owner of the property, the representative of the owner of the property from Gulf to Lakes is here, and I'm going to bring him up here in a second. But I've been told that the irony is, in nineteen eighty-seven, there was a resolution approved by the Board of County Commission that permitted high-density residential on a portion of this very same property we're talking about tonight. The same property, at one point during the history of this DRI, allowed for multifamily housing. The same property. Think about the irony of that, okay? I mean, this isn't something that is etched in stone, a DRI. It's not something that's etched in stone. And in this case here, even on this property, it's adjusted from time to time to allow residential, to not allow residential, to go back to commercial. So I find that very interesting. You know, at the end of the day, you know, I understand that there's a lot of people that are concerned about what we're proposing. I am one hundred percent certain that their fears are not going to come to fruition because I've seen it in my experience. I just, I've seen this play out all over the state. I've heard these concerns. They're simply not based on fact. It didn't happen at Colonnade. It didn't happen at Forest Ridge. We haven't harmed any of those neighborhoods where we've built. It hasn't, it hasn't happened. And you keep hearing them say that this is not about being against poor people. It's not about being against low-income people. But listen carefully to what a lot of them were saying. They're saying that they're homeowners. They are homeowners, right? So that makes them better than renters? Are we saying that we can't put rental housing in this county?
Wait, 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 wait a minute. Ladies and gentlemen, please.
Are we actually saying-
Just a second. Let's show proper courtesy. No more outbreaks like that, please. Please continue, sir.
What I'm hearing them say, a lot of them, is that renters shouldn't live near homeowners. That's at the end of the day what I heard a majority of them say. That's what they're afraid of, renters. There's no land development code that says you can't put renters near homeowners. I heard Mr. Cook say that Summer Hill was sold as a luxury condo community. And then it switched to rental, as if that was a bad thing. Why is that a bad thing? Why are renters viewed as any less than a homeowner? That's discrimination. I've tried to... Again, I would like to call Mr. Joe Capocelli because he's the representative of the owner of the property.
Just a second.
And he has some-
Is this a rebuttal to direct rebuttal to the questions we raised?
Yes, because it's specifically, he can speak to the history of this DRI, which I think is very important to the arguments that you heard. A lot of the arguments-
I wrote a list down of the questions asked. So his responses and yours need to be to the questions brought up during the opposition, okay?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Davis had a question.
One of the very specific questions that was brought up that I would like an answer to is to answer the rent and income breakdown question that was brought up about, is it Auburn?
Auburn Village, yeah. So-
What is the reality of what's going on in our county?
Okay.
Colonnade and Forest Ridge.
Okay. When we apply for funding, there are different criteria that you can commit to. In order to be competitive for the funding, we basically have to commit to have a hundred percent of the units restricted to eighty, sixty percent AMI and below, okay? All of them are restricted to sixty percent AMI and below. Now, to get some additional points in the RFA, in the funding application, we do set aside a smaller percentage for extremely low-income households. That's basically either thirty to forty percent of the median income. So that generally is like ten or fifteen percent. So I think what was being alluded to is that, yes, at Auburn Village, I believe we have ten or fifteen percent of the total units are restricted for very low-income households. But the rest of them are still restricted to sixty percent and below of the median income. Now, there was a good, Congress, a couple of years back, amended the tax credit program. And they allowed you to go all the way up to eighty percent of the median income, which is a good thing because now you're capturing more of the workforce. But you still have to average to sixty percent AMI and below. So you're allowed to have units at eighty percent, seventy percent, sixty percent, fifty, forty. So you're allowed to have units at 80%, 70%, 60%, 50, 40, whatever the developer sort of decides to do. But your average per the low-income housing tax credit program needs to be 60% of the median income. So in Citrus County, your median income today, this in 2022, is 68,600. So what that means is that if you're looking at a single-person household at the 80% AMI level, which is as high as I can go, you can't make more than $34,720 a year. If you look at the, a two-person household, it's $39,680. And a three-person household is $44,640. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
It does, and I had one other. Barbara Wheeler from Mid-Florida Homeless Coalition said that HUD says we need 603 units that are individual and 310 units that are family in the county. How many, remind me, I know I read it. How many are considered in your current 179 request? Are ones bedroom and how many are two-bedroom?
We haven't finalized the, the unit mix, but we generally like to split between one and two-bedroom apartments. We might put in a couple of threes, but our, our standard unit mix is half one, half one-bedroom, half two-bedroom.
Okay. I'm done, thank you.
Okay. All right. Please continue with your rebuttal.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'll just speak to a couple of...
Give us your name.
My name's Joe Capicelli. I'm with Gulf to Lakes Associates, which is the owner and the original developer of Meadowcrest. I'll just speak to just a few items that were brought up that are factual. First of all, the, the master plan that we're talking about. In 1987, the master plan called for high-density residential on the back portion of this property and office on the front portion of this property. In the early 2000s, it was changed to put office on the back and commercial on the front because obviously the thought was that there'd be a market for that. I think the market has spoken pretty versed in commercial and there really isn't a commercial market out there. I think it's obvious by Winn-Dixie leaving that market and SunTrust pulling out of the county building, it's obvious that there isn't really much of a commercial market. As far as rental units, this project was conceived as a mixed-use community. In fact, it was originally conceived to have more industrial, but over time it changed and more residential villages were added, Pinehurst and Fox Hollow, in exchange for some of the industrial. Summer Hill, which I sold, was sold as a rental community, 196 units. It's on 17 acres, the same density that's being proposed here, 12 units to the acre. They did try to convert to condos and they ended up selling some. But then it, it, the market caught up with them, they weren't able to close them out. They actually had to buy them back and it went through foreclosure. Today, there's 28 units that are out there, apartment units. It's approved, again, 196 units. It's 14 buildings, 14 per building. They are three-story in height, two and three-story in height. They will one day go up that hill and there'll be 14 buildings up that hill. That is what you have coming in off the 486 side. So, and just to a couple of other points that were made about infrastructure, who paid for the infrastructure? Gulf to Lakes paid for the infrastructure. Not only did we pay for the infrastructure in Meadowcrest, but we built the water and sewer plant to actually service high-density residential, which is what you had there. And eventually, it's owned by the county. It was all given to the county. In addition to that, because of being a DRI, we contributed $522,000 to the widening of 44 and portions of Rock Crusher Road to handle off-site impacts. One other comment that was made is there's a park there. And there is a park that is separate from the amenities that the residents use for the swimming pools and so forth. That park is actually paid for by not only the five residential villages, but the four non-residential entities that make up office park, commercial, industrial, and the apartments. But also you, the county, actually pay for that park in addition to Meadowcrest Boulevard and Meeting Tree. So I don't know, it'd be a question for legal, but since the county's paying for that park, I would think that possibly other taxpayers in Citrus County could also use the park in Meadowcrest. So you contribute to that, just like we contribute to those roads that are out there. The roads we don't contribute to are the ones that are within the residential subdivisions that are there. So I just wanted to clarify a few items that were brought up that I believe were maybe not incorrect, but weren't, you didn't get all the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to continue rebuttal in any way?
Just available to answer any, any additional questions from the board.
Okay, any additional questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so at this time, let me just remind everybody what's going to happen now. We've completed public input. This is time for the board to debate, discuss, you know, hash this out to what they see. And we will take no further public input. When this is completed, I just want to remind you, depending on what your point of view is, please remember, we're still in session. So when we complete this item, we still have other items on our agenda to deal with tonight. So when we're done, you know, regardless of the outcome, I just ask you to leave quietly as possible and then we'll be able to continue our meeting. So, board, let me ask you, and I'm leaving it up to you. I've done this both ways. I've done this where I've sat back and let the board express their views and then me chime in and tell you what I think and try to change your mind. And I've also jumped out and told you what I think and given you the opportunity to tell me where I'm wrong, which you've done a couple of times today. So, so what would you rather do? You'd rather hear what I think or would you want to, somebody want to talk about where they think we should go with this? Because in my mind, folks, this is not an easy decision, so.
Your attorney had her hand...
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to remind the board that depending on how the board is going, there are three potential conditions that you may wish to hear from staff.
Okay. Well, those are in our package. If, if we choose to approve it, the conditions are listed in there.
Just wanted to remind you.
Right. So what we'll do tonight is we'll be looking for an approval with the three conditions from staff, if the board wants to go that way or denial, right? That's the two choices in front of us, okay?
Yes, sir.
Everybody's clear on that? So, anybody want to take me up on my offer?
I will, if you want.
What's that?
I said, I'll go if you want.
Okay, fire away.
Oh, boy. All right. So, as I said earlier, actually, I'm going to start off with, I admire your villages very, very, very much. I have friends there, I'm there on a somewhat regular basis. As I said earlier, I would actually like to live there. I have an acre out in Citrus Hills and it's a lot to keep up with. I really admire your villages very, very much. I have to say that, I would also say where I am in Citrus Hills, Forest Ridge is right across from Terra Vista, which is pretty much one of the fanciest pants community that this, this county has. And it fits in absolutely fine. I would welcome another Forest Ridge around Citrus Hills and I would have absolutely no problem living next to this community as developed, living in Meadowcrest. I know I've just disappointed all of you, but I want you to know, just as Chairman Kitchen just said, this is an incredibly difficult position for us to be in. It is incredibly hard to take a stance against citizens. And if I thought for a moment that this was going to be more of a negative impact on your community than commercial, then I would be a lot more amenable to your arguments on that. But the traffic and everything else will be so much higher with commercial there. The other thing I take into account is Stan Olson is a, was, and we miss him very much in this community. He was a prescient visionary. And he did envision having high-density apartments in the Meadowcrest community. So people saying that that's not what you bought into, you didn't go far enough back in what the origination of this community was. Lastly, I know all of us get tired probably of hearing each other's personal stories, but I was holding my mother's hand when she died. I moved back here because she had dementia. And for four years, I navigated her through downgrading, downsizing her life. And I saw firsthand, and I got to tell you, that was a come-to-Jesus moment in her 40s. I saw firsthand, and I see a lot of gray hair in the audience. I love you guys, I particularly love the 99-year-olds that came out here. You may not believe me, but I am looking out for you. I really am. Now bear with me. I want you to, I want you to listen...
Ladies and gentlemen, please, please.
I have respectfully listened to all of you. I've respectfully read your emails. I want you to respectfully just take a moment, open your mind and think about this, okay? The PDC, with all due respect to them, they are a volunteer board. They do not spend the unbelievable hours that professional paid commissioners do studying what is best for the county, for the county. We have to balance that with whatever the local impact is. And I just said, if I thought this was going to be poor outcome for y'all, I would not back it. So, listen to me when I say workforce housing equals economic development. The ability to have that equals keeping your taxes in check, okay? That's number one. Number two, workforce housing means a sufficient level of medical staff in this county. So you have EMS show up when you have a heart attack. You have nurses to hold your hand in the hospital. And the very lowest economic class that they're talking about, like CNAs, think of how awesome it's going to be to have a CNA living in your neighborhood who can come over and do home care so you don't have to go to assisted living. I had to work full-time, so my mom had to go to assisted living. Okay, so you can age in place. So I may be wrong. I, I own it, I may be wrong. But that is what my experience as a year and a half as a commissioner and going to a lot of conferences and sitting through a lot of educational things says is the right thing to do for not just the county, but for y'all. I can't let a meeting go without trotting out of y'all. And I'm done.
Okay. Well, I'm going to jump back into it, so we'll have a different perspective. And then we'll let my three colleagues up here see where they want to come down on this. I have to say, the reason this is a difficult discussion is because we do. We get, we get full of demagoguery. We start talking about, we emotionalize everything, okay? And, and that's not what we're being asked to do today. We're being asked to make business decisions based on law. That's what the PDC did. Also, keep this in mind. Don't pay any attention to the PDC because they're just a volunteer board and we know better. But pay attention to the library board because they're a volunteer board and we don't want to go, you know? So what we come down to is if the volunteer board we agree with, we, they're okay. And if we disagree with them, they're not. All I'm saying is every volunteer board we have, we appreciate. I listen to what they have to say. I read why they say. And in the past, I've asked for the reasoning of the PDC's votes, not just who voted for and who voted against. So I, I just think that is just, we got to be consistent in our reasoning. Either you fully support the boards, volunteer boards, because they're the experts and they give you the advice, as was the case with the library board, or you don't pay any attention to them as we're hearing with the PDC. So, with that said, let's go back to, I have the floor, just a second. So, here's where we're going with this. 1987, I just moved here in 1987, right? And I've lived in the community a long time. Here's what we get into. The gentleman that got up and said, "This isn't about affordable housing," it's not. I would agree with those statements from the PDC. The PDC is tasked with looking at the law. When we look at land use changes, we are not allowed and we are not supposed to take into effect economic development and job creation. That's not a, a category that we look at. And I'll tell you why. This is a tough decision because what they want to do is a great product. What they want to do is a, is a great idea. And what they want to do is needed for Citrus County. What makes it difficult is in my mind, is this is not compatible with what's there. And I'll tell you why. And I've had people in Sugar Mill Woods calling me up and saying, "I don't want to complain. I moved in here, it was nice and quiet and now they're big, digging this big DRA behind my house." And I said, "Did you look at the master plan?" "Well, no." And on the master plan, there's a DRA there, it was just never built. So they didn't do their due diligence to see what was there. When you bought into where you live, your DRI and your PUD said, "This is what's going to happen." And my analogy to that is people move beside an airport. And if you move in beside an airport and you complain about the noise from the airplanes and, and that airport was always there or always planned, you knew that. But if you move into a quiet neighborhood and the, and the commission comes along and goes, "We need airports, okay? We're sorry what we told you in the past, but we need airports. So therefore, we're going to put an airport in." So that goes against your property rights. And that's why this is a difficult decision. So all I've done is I've gone through here, this thing about renters versus owners. If you own your home, are you allowed to rent it? Okay, so that, that's not an issue. Workforce housing, okay? The very, some of the people that got up here, the very people that we're supposed to be putting workforce housing in for, which I disagree with, I don't think it's the government's job to buy down the market for people to buy into homes. That, most people I know got into their homes by saving. Many people saved many, many years to get into a home. They didn't expect the government to step forward and say, "Here's, here's affordable housing." But the other thing that comes into play is some of the very people that we're supposed to live in Meadowcrest. So on one hand, you know, I've heard people go, "I'm a teacher, I'm this, whatever, I live in Meadowcrest." But now we, I want you to go against what I've been told my whole time. And here's the biggest thing that I've learned as a commissioner. I've been up here for eight years. And before that, I was the mayor of Christopher River for 10 years. So I've been through this a lot. And here's what you come down to is trust in government. People show up at these kind of meetings, we go through these public hearings, and they're told, okay? "This is, this is a PUD, here's a site plan." This is all that can be done on that. "Well, we don't have a site plan." That isn't part of what the application is. This is a zoning use change, okay? So, and, and the speaker in my mind that said, "Once this is passed, it can be used for anything." And that's why I don't like, how many times have we been through this? I do not, I will never upzone a, a piece of property without a site plan as part of the application. Because what was said earlier is true. It's being sold as this, it's a great idea, but if it doesn't work out, it can be used for anything that that property is zoned for. And without a site plan contingent on that, which is what your DRI was, okay? And, and one applicant is correct. We modify site plans, but we don't come in and say, you know, "This, this is going into this area because it fits the market better and it goes against the community." And my final comment was, they wanted to put a hotel in, beautiful hotel, created many jobs, would have paid a lot of taxes, and they wanted to put it in the middle of the most environmentally sensitive, pristine area in Old Homocasa. And we said, "Sorry, great project, breaks our heart to vote against it, but I can't vote for it because it comes back to this key word. I find it incompatible." So when I read through this, and I read through all this over and over and over again, the Planning and Development Commission finds application so-and-so inconsistent with the Citrus County Comprehensive Plan and Citrus County Land Development Code and recommends denial. And the number one thing that county commissioners are supposed to do is uphold the comprehensive plan. So, that's why I make my decisions not based on emotion, but consistent, comprehensive, and competent data that's presented to us. And so I listened to the applicant and it was a great, it was a great presentation. It's a great project. I just, in my personal opinion, it's not compatible with the area. The other thing that I would say is that this is about philosophy. This is all about philosophy. What should the government do? What should the government not do? I will never sit up here and say, "It's my job to take care of you." Never will I say that. I'll say, "It's my job to listen to you. That's what you pay me for." And so again, I don't set myself up as big brother to take care of you and watch out for you and get you to trust me. That's, if you voted for me, that's what you did because I told you I'd listen to you. I hope the applicant comes up, if this is denied, and if it goes forward, then I said my piece and I'm going to vote my way. But if, if it doesn't go forward, I hope the applicant tries again in a, in a different location that perhaps future boards may find more compatible or consistent. So I think I touched on most of this. I just want to make sure I didn't miss this thing. But I think that was most of it. Yes, Commissioner Slaybo.
I just wanted to, one point of clarification, if I may? Very short, very, very short. There's even a compliment, there's even a compliment in there for you.
Let everybody speak, then we'll come back to you. And I don't care about compliments. As you know, I'm a, I'm a grumpy old man and I don't care if people like me or not. Okay, Commissioner Slaybo.
Okay. Been a long day. And I'm just going to say a few things, like Commissioner Davis said, they've heard our story, but you have not. I'm a native Floridian, born and raised in Sarasota. I've seen what's happened to Sarasota. We moved up here in 1995. I have spent 16 years going to Meadowcrest four times a day, four days a week. I know your, I know your neighborhood. My daughters, twin daughters took ballet at Miss Ronnie's. your, I know your neighborhood. My daughters, twin daughters took ballet at Miss Ronnie's. I, I know those streets, and I hate those stop signs, and I'm telling you, I've been in your neighborhood. I, I cut through your neighborhood to this day. And when the parkway was coming through, um, in 2018, when I was decided, "Okay, I'm going to run for office, and I'm going to really look into things," one of the concerns I brought, one of the very first concerns I brought up is, "Hey, is anybody thinking about Meadowcrest?" Because when that parkway comes to 44 and it comes to 486, is anybody looking after that? Well, i- it's kind of hard because, you know, we're, we're, you know, the commission is limited on what can and cannot be done. I, this pains me because I know Meadowcrest. I know, I knew Mr. Olson quite well. He was my neighbor, Miss Betty, and I know what, he was light years ahead of any of us as far as what he envisioned for Meadowcrest and Black Diamond. Every time I drive through Black Diamond's gate to go home, I say, "Thank you, Mr. Olson. Thank you, Mrs. Olson." I, I can't say enough good. What is really hurting me, and more than you will know, is that this is a great project, and I have said over and over and over, "We need young people, young professionals housing. We need this so desperately." When my twins left, they're 22, they were like, "Bye, not coming back." And if they didn't have us here, I don't know that if they got a job in Citrus County where they would live. What is hurting me is, I can't support this project, and I can't tell you how much this hurts me. You know how much this hurts me, and I pray that you can find something and do bigger, but I just don't feel that this is compatible. I feel that, that what these people bought into it by doing a change is, um, is unfair. The other part of that coin is, you might be making a mistake. This might be better the devil you know than the devil you don't know. And I do think a box store would be more disruptive than this project here, but I, and I'm, I, I'm telling you, Mr. Kitchen, Commissioner Kitchen has said it, and I always kind of laughed at him about it, but he said he'd have to hold his nose to make this vote. I have to hold my nose to make this vote because I don't think I can live with the incompatibility and the amount of traffic that will be coming onto the roads even more so. And so, I hate myself for it, but I'm sorry. I just can't, I can't support this.
It's a very tough job, isn't it? Okay, Commissioner Carr.
Yep. Well, I'm just going to hit on the points that I think are pertinent to the discussion, and, um, uh, while I certainly feel for everybody who's contacted me about this and got up here and spoke today, um, multifamily has been planned for Meadowcrest for many years. The infrastructure has been funded, um, in part, uh, by the owners of this piece of property for years to support multifamily. Um, it was brought up a couple times, the removal of the trees, I get it, but the majority of those are planted pines.
Yeah.
There, it's a crop grown to be removed. Uh, smart growth is, is infill. This is infill. This is smart growth. Um, we're not getting, what we heard was, you're not going to get, um, commercial development there. Commercial development is not coming there, uh, as evidenced by the struggles of the, of the local commu, uh, commercial, uh, units available because there's not enough people there. There's not enough people in that area to support it. The doctor's offices, uh, are going out to, uh, the central part of the county. Uh, the big commercial development is going out to the center part of the county. Uh, we need, uh, we need infill, and that's what this project would bring. Uh, last but not least, uh, this company has a track record, not just elsewhere, but a track record in our county for doing quality projects. Uh, we've had workshops about, um, attainable housing, workforce housing. Uh, we've had lengthy discussions about it. We've talked about the need for it. Uh, I would support it.
Okay. Commissioner Carr, hand.
Well, thank you. Um, you know, Commissioner Carr made a lot of great points right there, and, uh, workforce affordable housing is extremely tough. Uh, my, my son, uh, makes very, very good money, um, but unfortunately, the housing market's tough. Um, there, there's not enough housing out there. And again, this board has said, uh, we, we've just got, I've discussed it for eight years, uh, you know, workforce housing. Uh, this is infill. Um, I do believe that, uh, this company has been a great neighbor to, to our county. Uh, every project they have done, uh, they, they've done a tremendous job. Uh, you know, I, I reached out to the city of Emory's because they did, uh, that one there. Um, yeah, they could, uh, do nothing but talk great about it, so I will support it.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we're not finished. No vote has been taken, and I tell you what, you know, yeah, I was just going to compliment you all on the fact that what made this such a tough decision, uh, for I think all of us, was the fact that you got up here, you were very civil, and you gave excellent points. You just didn't get up and say, "We're against it." You got up and said, "This is why. These are what our concerns were." Um, so again, I just want you to know, that's what, this is what we do. Sometimes it goes the way folks want it to go. Sometimes it doesn't, but until the actual vote has been called, it's not official. So, I've, you've been here all day. You might as well stick around and see how it goes. Um, so, I just want to say this also, too, just to, just bring us back to reality here. Who, whoever the 99-year-old person that was here, um, if they've left, uh, please invite them back when they turn 100, because we give out proclamations to people when they turn 100. So, we'd like to have her come back and recognize it for that. Okay, board, so I need a motion to do something. Who wants to make one? And please have it include, and please have it include-
Based on-
If you want conditions, that it includes those conditions, and, um, one of the commissioners asked, "Do we have a record of what those three conditions were so that everybody knows what they were?" Because I don't remember those being read during, during the presentation.
I did find it.
Okay.
The suggested conditions are, the master development land use plan map H1 of the Meadowcrest Development of Regional Impact DRI is hereby modified with the following notation. Up to 179 units, excuse me, 179 attached residential housing units may be substituted for commercial and/or office park use in accordance with the following conversion chart, and the conversion chart is 1,000 square feet of commercial to 6.94 units of attached residential dwelling units. Two, the attached residential housing may be placed in commercial and/or office park areas of the existing master development land use plan. Buildings will be limited to three stories, including parking areas, and will be required to meet all other LDC and/or DRI criteria for parking, buffers, landscaping, impervious surface, and other development factors. And three, all other provisions of the Meadowcrest Development of Regional Impact DRI shall remain in full force and effect.
So, those were the three conditions if you make a motion to move forward with that did come from the PDC that they wished included. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then also, we would want the motion to include, "Based on competent and substantial evidence and findings of fact," so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Based on competent and substantial evidence and finding of fact, I move that we adopt and authorize the chairman to execute the ordinance for PUD dash 22 dash 03, Green Mills LLC for Gulf to Lakes Associates, LLP, and direct the clerk to execute the ordinance. This needs to include the three conditions recommended by the PDC.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Okay, so Commissioner Davis makes the motion, seconded by Commissioner Canard. Board, we've discussed it to death. Any other comments?
I did want to come back to, um, two things. Number one, um, I did skip over my note. You brought up a very good point that we need to listen to our advisory boards. Um, the difference between the library advisory board and the PDC is that the staff recommended, the professional staff recommended this as being, um, good with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the comprehensive plan. So, um, that's why, and I thank you for pointing that out. And secondly, um, to Commissioner Schleba's point, if this was not the original intent of Stan Olson, and it was not always planned for the overall community, it was in a different spot, but overall community, then I would have a hard time being in favor of this. But he did, and so I am.
Yeah, all right. It's okay. Please, okay. So, we've had all of our final discussion. No further board discussion. Madam Clerk, would you give us a roll of call though, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Canard.
Aye.
And Commissioner Schleba.
Nay.
And Commissioner Carnahan.
Aye.
And Chairman, Chairman Kitchen.
Nay. So, I read that as it passes three to two. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's approved, vote of three to two. Okay, thank you. That completes this business. We will now, um, and again, I want to thank you all for coming tonight. We're now going to go back. I believe we have some budget work to finish, right? So.
I'm going to buy a lottery ticket.
So, commissioners, commissioners, let's do this. Let's take, we're going to just take a, like a two, a two-minute recess, okay? Let everybody get up and stretch their legs. At least the clerk needs to run off or anything, you know. So, no, we haven't adjourned yet.